...planet in the wake of climate change, or grappling with issues of social justice, or whether people of different faiths will be banned from even coming to this country.
And let's not leave the young ones out. They also have a role to play lighting up the church with pinwheel lights. All this inclusiveness will now be on display for all the public to see. The church just got its own street corner dedicated outside. The corner will now be called Congregational Square. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The church, by the way, lies at the intersection of several council districts in LA, Districts 4, 10, and 13. In Pacific Palisades, going to the beach just got a lot safer for pedestrians. Anna Marcos shows us how a brand-new type of pedestrian stoplight is making a difference.
Who would think a walk to the beach could be fatal? But on the PCH near Pacific Palisades, it can be. Before the new stoplight came on, it often was.
My granddaughter's boyfriend was killed out here, driving across where one side stopped and the other cars on the side. Lady just drove straight through.
To help stop such tragedies, Caltrans officials have installed a brand-new type of pedestrian-activated signal, the second signal of its kind ever in LA.
The signal stays dark until a pedestrian presses the button. It begins then yellow flashing to alert drivers, and then a solid yellow to tell drivers to prepare to stop, and then shifts to a solid red.
This is something that has been badly needed, not just here, but up and down Pacific Coast Highway in this area where there have been a number of accidents over the years.
City leaders welcome the $750,000 improvement. They say it will help the city's Vision Zero Plan move forward.
The goal is to get the city's embarrassing rate, shameful rate of traffic collisions down to zero by 2025. We have more traffic fatalities in Los Angeles this year than homicides.
But officials warn a signal alone, no matter how high-tech, can't stop a traffic accident. They advise both pedestrians and motorists to stay alert and watch the road. Still, many residents here are counting on fewer car collisions and hopefully fewer tragic fatalities in the future. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
When it comes to playgrounds, we often think of safety first. But how often do we think about accessibility? Not very often. But city leaders have made that a priority as they unveil a new playground that ensures kids of all abilities can have fun.
Kelly Akins is excited about the launch of Rocket's Universe Playground. With her son Max, who is cerebral palsy, she understands all too well the importance of having an accessible playground. Max is now 21, but she remembers going to playgrounds where he couldn't play, and it was often difficult and heartbreaking for her to see.
You know, we couldn't get the wheelchair across the woodchips. He couldn't go down the slide. He couldn't swing in the swing. You know, obviously he couldn't climb on the jungle gym. So it was so sad. It got to be where I couldn't even drive past a playground.
Rocket's Universe in Weddington Park is named in honor of John Taylor "Rocket" Williams IV, who was born with a genetic disorder and lost his life at the precious age of two and a half.
He was in a wheelchair, and he didn't have a lot of the same accesses to things. Like when we would take him to the park, you know, it was a lot of stuff. There were wheels in the sand and all of that kind of thing. We wanted a place where people could go and all sort of come together and feel a sense of belonging together, and everybody have equal access.
It is the 33rd inclusive playground in Los Angeles, designed in a collaborative effort between the nonprofit group called Shane's Inspiration and the Department of Recreation and Parks. Officials say Los Angeles is one of the most playable cities in the world for children of all abilities.
We have 33 parks where kids with disabilities can play by themselves without the help of anybody helping them move, or you know, get onto it with an equipment or anything like... It is amazing, isn't it?
A lot of the features built into this playground accommodate kids of all abilities. For example, if you take a look at this rampway here, it can comfortably fit a wheelchair or a walker.
It is what makes a park. It's what first brings our children to the park. And it's that connection that a playground offers that allows us to continue on with your children as they get older.
It's just an opportunity to bring kids together just as kids. So kids of all ability levels, of all challenges, can come together and play on the same equipment at the same time and interact with each other, get to know each other, and see what they have in common instead of what they have that's different.
Something kids also understand.
And it gives the people with disabilities like company because usually they're alone because people think they're different.
Actor Justin Baldino from the hit series Jane the Virgin, and a father himself, also appreciates the importance of a playground.
And as much as we are here to teach our children, I think that there's so much they can teach us.
A playground where perhaps new friendships, dreams, and inspirations are launched. In North Hollywood, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Shane's Inspiration has 64 similar parks worldwide and hopes to continue to build more in Los Angeles. Well, it's lights, camera, action as the mayor takes steps to help cut filming costs for low-budget digital productions in LA. A new memorial honors a key figure in the city's history and giving kids a chance to get up close and personal with several successful book authors this summer. All these stories in City Beat. LA City Mayor Eric Garcetti launched the Digital Makers Initiative, a pilot program that seeks to help keep productions in LA by cutting 2/3 of film permitting costs for small and digital-first productions. Digital filmmakers have historically been priced out of expensive permits that cater to big-budget projects. This initiative, which cuts red tape for small, low-impact productions, is the first pilot program of its kind in the nation. The mayor said that the program will help make sure that Los Angeles and all of its production and location resources remain accessible to small productions. The Digital Makers Initiative is designed for productions that have a low impact on communities in which they shoot. Pilot participants will pay a $250 fee and will be required to take part in a Film LA training program. Cast and crew will be limited to up to 15 people on set for interior filming and up to six people for exterior filming. The newly-installed Blue Star Memorial Marker at Orchid Ranch in West Hills was dedicated recently. The Blue Star Memorial Program is a national program which honors members, past, present, and future of all branches of the United States Armed Services. Orchid Ranch was named after oil pioneer William Warren Orchid, who used the ranch as his retirement and vacation home. He also served in the National Guard from 1895 to 1897. The city of Los Angeles acquired the land in 1966 and is currently operated by the Department of Recreation and Parks. The memorial marker was made possible through funding from the West Valley Garden Club. The Library Foundation kicked off its Summer Author Series with authors Ariana Stein and Patty Rodriguez. The Summer Author Series brings children and young adult authors and illustrators to libraries to share stories, provide insights into their career paths, and interact with students. This summer, the series will hold 47 different author programs throughout the city. Refreshments will be provided, and participants will have a chance to win a free copy of the author's book.
The idea of bringing in summer author is to bring both young adult authors and children's authors to the libraries to connect with the children so they can be inspired to maybe one day becoming an author or illustrator themselves.
The LA Dodgers continue to give back to their fans by showing young kids how important it is to hit a home run with reading. Rasha Goel has more.
"Once upon a time," said the frog, "there was a lizard sitting on a rock."
It's not every day these young kids get to hear stories read by their favorite baseball players. But today was their lucky day. As part of the LA Reads Program, an initiative by the LA Dodgers to get children excited about reading, these young 3rd and 4th graders were treated to a special storytime at the Central Library with LA Dodger players Andre Ethier, Rich Hill, and Yasmani Grandal.
Picking up a book and something that you're interested in is vital to your communication, to how our vocabulary expands, and just makes you overall more confident.
The program was developed to improve kids' reading levels. Statistics show that only about 1/3 of American 4th graders can read well.
I think it's important for her because it expands her mind. It expands her vocabulary, her communication skills.
Do you know the secret to throwing?
Sure. Have fun.
Dodgers players are quite the storytellers. They did a great job reading books to kids and really are encouraging reading and talking about how important it is for young people to read and how books are really a window to the world.
Students also got to take pictures with the players and received a book to take home. A win-win for all. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
As part of LA Reads, students can track their reading minutes online and can earn chances to win special Dodger prizes, including an on-field recognition before a Dodger game. While enjoy plenty of 4th of July celebrations, including several fireworks shows throughout the city and a skydiving parade. All of this in this week's Things to Do. Celebrate Independence Day at the annual John Alguin July 4th Spectacular. The San Pedro July tradition is now in its 67th year. The free celebration features music, family activities, food trucks, and a spectacular fireworks show at 9:00 PM on Cabrillo Beach. The festivities start at 12:00 PM, so don't miss it. Cabrillo Beach is located at 3720 Stephen M. White Drive in San Pedro. 4th of July celebrations wouldn't be complete without a parade, right? So head on over to the 68th Annual Pacific Palisades 4th of July Parade. Starting just before 2:00 PM, a band of patriotic skydivers will descend from the sky, kicking off the neighborhood's massive parade. Come join your neighbors and enjoy the best bands and equestrian units in the country, marching alongside community groups, local celebrities, neighbors, and kids. For locations and more information, visit palisadesparade.org. Over in the valley, it's one of the most spectacular fireworks displays in Southern California. The July 4th fireworks extravaganza delights over 60,000 people with a free concert and 15-minute spectacular fireworks display. There are more than 20 local restaurants on hand with arts and crafts vendors and local businesses promoting and selling their goods. The event takes place at Warner Center on July 4th from 6:00 to 9:30 PM. So come early. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 28th, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buskain, Osorio, Engler, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Kresk, Correa, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present. In a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Correa moves and Mr. Corretts seconds. I'm sorry, Mr. Corretts moves and Mr. Corretts seconds. Next?
Madam President, that brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonn moves and Mr. Sodio seconds, next.
Very good, Madam President. There are requests to continue Items 1B, 4, and 66 to July 25th further. For Item 26, no council action is required inasmuch as it was subsequently waived by the Arts, Parks, and River Committee and is currently scheduled for council this Friday, June 30th. Additionally, there is a request to refer Item 74 back to the Budget and Finance Committee inasmuch as the committee... inasmuch as the committee continued this matter. And lastly, for item 75, the city attorney advises that no council action is required.
Without objection, that will be the order?
Very good. Madam President, given the impending council recess, would you like to send all items today forthwith?
Yes, without objection, all items will be sent forthwith. What's next?
Very good. Items 1 through 16 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on those items?
Madam President, we do have cards on items 1, 2, and 5.
Members, are there any specials on the items before us? Seeing none. On the remaining ballots, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
And Madam President, those orders will go over to July 25 unless reconsidered today with 12 members. That brings council to items 17 through 54. They're items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 22, 23, 24, 25, 46, 48, and 54 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration. For item 20, the city clerk reports that the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of supporting ballots, 19.31 percent to 80.69 percent respectively. Therefore, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment may be authorized.
Okay, members, are there any specials? You see none on the remaining items? Mr. Corret, go ahead.
I'd like to call item 44 special.
44 special for Mr. Corret. Any other items?
And Madam President, there's been a request to lay item 48 on the desk for Councilmember Rue.
48 for Mr. Rue. The remaining ballots, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
What's next?
And again, Madam President, those orders will go over to July 25 for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12 members. That brings council to items 55 through 67. They're items which public hearings have not been held. For item 63, it should be noted that the Board of Water and Power Commissioner's action was taken on June 20th, not June 19th, and that the MOUs are for the period of October 1, 2017, through September 30th, 2022, as correctly identified on the agenda description, but incorrectly identified in Recommendations 1 and 2. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, duly noted, those, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Clerk, are there any cards on these items?
Madam President, there are. We have cards on items 55, 56, 57, 58, 62, 65, and 67.
Members, are there any specials, Mr. Bonn?
63.
63 for Mr. Bonn. Any others, Mr. Rue? Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
What's next?
And Madam President, I apologize again, those orders will go over to July 25 unless reconsidered later today with 12 members. That brings council to items 68 through 75. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and hold them on the desk for Mr. Correa. We're gonna go ahead and move on to presentations. I'm gonna ask Mr. Corret to please take the chair. Mr. Corret?
Mr. President, I believe that brings us to a presentation by Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, that is correct.
It's great to see you in the chair this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, colleagues. Today's presentation is bittersweet. I'm sad to say goodbye to an incredible L.A. USD board member, but I'm honored to recognize the work, the contributions, and the deep passion for education that school board president Steve Zimmer displayed every single day. Steve is a dear friend of mine. When I joined the school board in 2009, one of the other new board members at the time was Westside Representative Steve Zimmer. And when I was running for office, I was also pregnant, and I remember we were at an SCIU endorsement meeting together in the City of Commerce, and there was this white skinny guy running around in the parking lot after the endorsement meeting, making sure that I knew where my car was at, making sure that I wasn't thirsty, and just being really nice. Then when we won, I said, you know, this guy's a really nice guy. He's gonna be great to work with, and after that, we became really good friends. And that's my story of how I met Steve Zimmer. Steve was a good board member to serve with. I always knew he was passionate about student success. He was dedicated to attracting and retaining the very best teachers at L.A. Unified. And for the four, for the four years later, I ran for the school, for the city council, and Steve got re-elected to the school board. He's served with distinction for the past eight years, and L.A.'s students and teachers are better because of his service. In fact, Steve has been serving our city's youth since 1992, when he first became a school teacher. Last year, Steve, that year, I'm sorry, in 1992, Steve joined Teach for America and began working as an ESL teacher at John Marshall High School. Since being on the board, he's led many innovative campaigns. He focused and founded Student Recovery Day, helping students with excessive absences. He helped create over 48 magnet programs. He expanded language programs. He helped parents beautify their local schools through gardens, and he's been dedicated to ending student hunger, leading the way to expand the school meals program. Steve created these programs even though his time on the school board was never easy. While on the school board, Steve had to tackle some very serious issues that would have worn down anyone else who wasn't as dedicated to service as Steve. He had to fight public school choice against deep pockets when we were serving together. He served on the school board during a period of unprecedented budget cuts and required painful decisions. And the one that's personal to my heart and the one that we dealt with together, often in very, very tumultuous times, was when we dealt with the serious molestation issues in some of our schools that ripped our hearts out when we tried to protect the kids at L.A. Unified. None of this was easy, but as always, I was so proud of Steve's seriousness and thoughtfulness that he displayed every single day, even in the most gut-wrenching decisions. He always put the education and safety of young people first above anything else. The past two years, Steve has served our community as president of L.A. Unified and has been rightly respected in that role. In short, he's spent his life advancing the needs of our children. It's always sad to see a political ally and friend lose an election, but when a friend who's a champion of L.A.'s young people, it's even more painful. I am grateful to my friend Steve, my colleague, and one of the best L.A. Unified school board presidents the district has ever seen. Thank you, Steve, for your commitment to children. Thank you for being my friend. And thank you for being a champion for the kids in the city of Los Angeles. Before I let Steve speak, I want to introduce another friend of ours, Eric Garuna, who's president and CEO of L.A.'s Best After-School Programs, a program that's very dear to Steve's heart, and I want Eric to say a few words and present him with something. So if we please give him the mic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good morning. I speak today representing the 25,000 kids and families of L.A.'s Best, and that's just the current kids and families. But in your tenure, Steve, you have been a fierce, fierce advocate for after-school programs, for seeing schools as community centers, and for seeing schools as a hub of community support for the holistic development of young people, not just the narrow definition of academic success. And as the partnership between the city and the school district, L.A.'s Best has been really the beneficiary of that support. Steve went with me to Sacramento and spent a full day advocating for the state to increase funds for after-school programs, and was an integral part of our success. In the budget that the governor signed yesterday, it included $50 million of increased support for after-school programs across the state. I spent some time at the Federal Department of Education, and I was shocked in the time that I spent there with how little people spoke of children. And what I want to thank you for, Steve, is always, always speaking, not just about children, but about all children. And in today's divisive political climate, you've been an inspiration to me for staying true to my heart and my values, and you'll continue to be an inspiration for me and for all of L.A.'s Best. So I really want to thank you for your support and for your heart, and I want to present this to you as a small token of our affection. Thank you.
Members, I'd like to introduce my good friend, Steve Zimmer. I want to thank the colleagues who showed up this morning to our reception. As you can tell, a lot of people turned out this morning to not only honor Steve, but to say thank you for his 25 years of service to children and families at L.A. Unified. It's my pleasure to introduce school board member Steve Zimmer.
Ms. Martinez, we have a number of members on the queue, so perhaps we can have them speak first.
Let's ask Mr. Zimmer, see what he wants to do.
Whichever way you would like it.
Thank you very much. We would let, we would, Mr. Zimmer would very much like to hear from our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Martinez, thank you for bringing forward this presentation. And Mr. Zimmer, thank you for allowing us to speak before you, because it'll be very hard to follow you. I'm just very happy to be a part of this presentation, even though it's a little bit of a sad occasion. I think we'll only be sad for a little while, because you will find your way into public life very, very soon, and you will have as big an impact as you ever had. I feel like we've known each other for at least 20 years, probably 25 years. When I met Steve Zimmer, Ms. Martinez, he had an Afro, and I was a young student organizer, and I was trying to get students in different parts of the city organized around quality of facilities at school. And so Steve was known to be an activist at Marshall High School, and I found in him then and have continued to know that he's somebody that wakes up every morning, one, caring about and loving our children, two, never, ever, ever accepting that the status quo is the way that it has to be, and three, understanding that it's his responsibility to fight to move us forward. I just found out this morning that my alleged deputy, you were his counselor at Marshall High School, and he said, he said you helped get him through school, which was a big deal, and get into the right schools, and you kept him from getting thrown out of school a couple times, which is very, very important. Which brings me to the last thing that I want to talk about. The last thing you and I got to work together on when you were on the school board and I was at Community Coalition, we worked on this very important issue that I think soon will get national attention, and that is suspension and expulsions of young people out of L.A. USD. When you started and we started that campaign, L.A. USD was literally suspending hundreds and thousands of kids every year. And what we found was, there are things that the state legislature later has made it so are their automatic suspensions. If you have drugs, if you have a weapon, if you use violence against someone. But there's a fourth category called willful defiance. And, I mean, you were on the school board, Ms. Martinez, you know, willful defiance, if people got in trouble for that, me and you would get thrown out of the council in our first week. Willful defiance was a category that 85 percent of the kids were getting thrown out of school on. And so Mr. Zimmer helped us lead the campaign to end that. L.A. USD reduced its suspensions by almost 1,000 a year in our district, kept those kids in schools, kept adults working with them, and eventually, those are the kids that end up going to prison, those are the kids that end up being in the system for long periods of time. And so it will change our quality of life for years and years to come. So thank you for that. Thank you for loving and caring for our children, and we're very, very excited to see what you'll do next.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Martinez, for arranging this presentation today. This one's actually really tough. I'm getting emotional just thinking about Steve. You and I've known you for not nearly as long as Mr. Harris Dawson, about 10 years, I guess. No, longer, I guess. And we have shared constituents. Your district encompasses mine in its entirety, and I've often noted, particularly over the past year, that I've thought that you've had the most difficult and challenging job in government, representing a hyper-engaged part of the city, serving on the school board, and serving as school board president simultaneously. That's a challenging trifecta. And I have, I have watched you work. You would often see me and warn me that there was a huge controversy I was about to hear about, and advise me that you'll take the hits, it's your issue. And the thing that struck me is, you know, these jobs that we have are not easy. We deal with complicated and difficult issues. The easy ones don't get to our desk, and we often deal with lots and lots of problems. And periodically, we deal with huge controversies. Road diets are trying to put permanent supportive housing in, a couple of examples for me. But that level of sort of hyper-controversy struck me as something that you dealt with every single day on every single issue. And I could see on your face the way you struggled with those issues, because you cared so much about everyone involved. And I thought, I always thought that you had a very, very distinct and unique ability to be able to see every side and to put yourself in the shoes of both sides. You are, I think, for me, one of the most empathetic public officials that I have ever And what that made you into as an elected official is someone who, I think, worked harder than anybody else, who felt more deeply than anybody else, and who really, genuinely, genuinely loved every kid in the school system. I mean, and that was palpable, that you brought not just concern, not just an intellectual passion, but real love for the kids in the school system. And it's been amazing to watch. You have been, like Marquise, I'm glad that you're going last, because I think I had known you a couple of years before I saw you speak publicly, and you are a brilliant and articulate and passionate speaker, so thank God you're going last. I just want to say, Steve, I really admire you, and without hyperbole, exaggeration, sentimentality, I love you. I really do, and I look forward to continuing to work with you in whatever's next.
And members, I hate to be the Grinch here, but if we could be mindful of our time, Mr. Sadio. In fact, Mr. President Zimmer can... In fact, Mr. President Zimmer can relate to that. Be mindful of your time, Mr. Sadio.
I love you too, Steve. So you are the embodiment of the principle that all of us must live by, that no good deed goes unpunished. And the greater the challenge, and the greater the deed, the greater the punishment. I met you, similar experience, not pregnant, but similar experience. In 1994, there was Proposition 187. And I met this incredible family here from the Temple Boltry area, the Miranda family. And we kept hearing about the Miranda sisters, and as we tried to work to mobilize the youth of Southern California against Prop. 187, your name kept popping up. And then after both these young women worked for me, and you were always the standard of review, the person being compared to, and then I met you, not with an Afro, but with a ponytail. And was impressed by your humility. And I thought, how's this guy such a giant? And now, you know, these young people just think so highly of you, and you're their inspiration, and, you know, everybody's like, you know, talking about you, and I thought, wow, he's so humble. You know, this is a tough life, politics, and how's he gonna, you know, deal with this? But, you know, let me echo what everybody said, because I feel that, I share that. You've been uncompromising about your progressive values. You are really nice. Trustworthy and empathetic, as Mike said. You know, you have the worst attributes for politics, you know? You suffer from humility, and, and you suffer from candor. So you're doomed for politics.
This is supposed to be happening.
And you are willfully defiant, and perhaps your greatest attribute is you take that willful defiance and use it for the greater good. Your love for students, your caring for teachers and teaching is unrivaled. Everybody knows it. You wear it on your sleeve, your chest, your whole suit, your hats, everything. There's no trying to figure you out. You are such a honest, incredible, thoughtful, kind, and great public servant. I also have confidence that you will stay on the scene, and that we will see you soon. But let me take this one moment with all my colleagues and say, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had the pleasure of knowing Steve Zimmer since 2002, when I was a field deputy for then-council member Eric Garcetti. And you had, you were operating Elysian Valley United, which you helped cofound, and were managing and running the programs there, and working full-time as a teacher at Marshall. We worked together so closely in those early years, and let me just tell you that by your example, it has influenced my approach to public service. You've done incredible work. You always had the best interests of the youth in Elysian Valley, every detail. It was no wonder to me that you would serve on the Los Angeles Unified School District Board and then become its president. It was a natural progression for who you are at the very core. And I think that some of my colleagues have spoken to the quality of character that you have, and how, how unflinching it is at your core, and that translates, and people see that, and people know that, which is why there were powerful interests aligned against you, spending $15 million on a school seat, because they just had to have it. Well, what they sacrificed is someone who will never, ever care more about our youth, someone who will never, ever be as selfless in their approach to serving our youth and our kids, and effectuating good public policy that improves the lives of families, not just the children, but families in the area. Your pioneering efforts in alignment with the Youth Policy Institute, on making sure that homeless kids could get their high school diplomas, and setting up those, those schools, essentially, for that purpose. You've never, ever left anyone behind, and no one, and I mean this, no one will ever match your level of work or dedication, or quite frankly, accomplishment, on the Los Angeles Unified District School Board. Your legacy will be, continue to be felt for years to come. Your legacy is exemplified here around this horseshoe. And so let me just thank you for your friendship, thank you for making me a better public servant, and just know that I look forward to continuing collaborating with you into the future, because you have a lot more to do, and I look forward to being a supporter of yours, and whatever it is you want to do, because the city needs your talents, your ability, your passion, and we, the best is probably yet to come, and we just don't realize it yet. So thank you, Steve Zimmer.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will follow instructions, but I just wanted to rise and join the chorus of congratulatory, you know, remarks, and honoring our good friend, Steve Zimmer. I, I did not have the opportunity to know you as long as some of my colleagues, but I knew of you, and I heard of you, because you've done so much throughout your life for, for public service, and especially for students. And our districts overlap as well, and I've been at many events where, where we're in the community talking to kids, and as we all know, the hardest audience to talk to are children. And, and I took, and I picked up a lot of tips on how, because, I mean, you have the teacher background, and especially elementary school kids, where it's really hard to get their attention. As adults, we, as an adult who's not a teacher, tends to speak over them, not, not with them. And you taught me how to actually talk to the students that you serve. And, and I learned a lot from that, and I, and your passion came through. And recently, I had the fortunate opportunity to work with you on children's savings accounts. And while I like to say that we were able to start it, and I was able to start it here in the city of LA, that's not the case. Children's savings accounts has been around for years, and the idea has been around for decades. And the only reason we even got this far with children's savings accounts is because you were always ready. You know, LAUSD was always ready. I mean, the, you had to nudge, nicely nudge the bureaucracy to move, and, but the only reason we're even talking about it the way we are here in the city of LA is because you were there as a partner. You were ready to go, and you were basically saying quietly, where were you guys? Come on now. So I really thank you for your partnership. We would not be here without you. But it's, it's not like you're going away. I know you're gonna be involved in one way or another, serving children, and I definitely want to work with you in, in any capacity, and, and Godspeed to your future. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, this is really a bittersweet time. I don't know how long I've known you as a friend, but you've always been a friend, and I've always respected your, the unique role you played as a board member, as president of the board. You always, you were unafraid to not seek out those positive, progressive programs that really positively impacted kids and families in our district. And so we're grateful for you, for your, your leadership. We know that you've got the kind of spirit that can't be suppressed, and that won't be denied, and we look forward to working with you in future endeavors. Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. Just wanted to add my voice as well, Steve. You've been, you've been a great friend. I didn't know you 25 years ago, when you, when you came here to teach. I've heard the great stories, I didn't, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about your hair. I didn't know you when you had the Afro, or the Jew fro, as we call it, or, or the ponytail. I first got to know you when, when you were first elected, and we overlapped in the areas that we represented. I represented, I was in the State Assembly, this was in '09. You were follically challenged then, but you were not challenged when it came to your love of, of students. You were, you became my go-to guy on education, because we overlapped. I'd see you at all these different events, and I was always impressed by your commitment. And, you know, we became friends and allies on many different issues. Good part of the district, we would talk about the schools and how to improve things. You would talk about how we can get more education from the state, and, and I was impressed not just by the fact that you were there as an active member of the board, but you, you looked at the bigger picture, whether it was school readiness, which was always a passion of yours, or whether it was sort of looking at, at how do we, how do we get outside of our bubble and look at the bigger picture of improving the school. And so been proud to be a friend, and continue to be a friend, and I know that this is, this, this election is just a, is just a step. And as, as my colleague said, no good deed goes unpunished. I mean, this was one of those tough elections to watch, $15 million being spent. It's sort of the, was the most expensive district race in the country in 2017, and it's sort of an example of, you know, of why some of these Supreme Court decisions, Buckley v. Vallejo, you know, that have led to these outrageous independent expenditures, need to be looked at and changed, because this is sort of the way that elections are going, where it's, you know, the, the amount spent is dwarfed by what the candidate spends. And so you're gonna have the best candidate in the world with, with great ideas and running a great campaign, and it just becomes noise with all, with all of this independent expenditure coming in. So it's, it's both, in a sense, it's not the canary in the coalmine, because the canary is long since dead. This is, this is, we, we see this is happening, but it is a serious lesson about that, about that problem that's out there with these independent expenditures. And I know that you've got exciting plans moving forward. I read your, you had this email recently where you, you sort of laid it all out of, of what we need to do, and I was inspired by that, that email, and I'm inspired by you. And I just want to thank you for all the great service that you've done for our students in the past, and thank you in advance for all you're gonna do for our community and our students in the future. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Karetz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's an honor for me to have Steve Zimmer as my very good friend, and I'm certainly sorry to see you going at this point. You've dedicated your whole adult life to public service, everything from Teach for America to Marshall High, to your time on the school board, and you have tremendous accomplishments at every step along the way. One of the things that people don't mention much is the fact that we had a pretty abysmal graduation rate when you started, and it's up from being in the mid-50s into the 75% plus. A huge accomplishment. And, and as Mr. Sadio said, no matter what the political costs, you always did exactly what you thought was the right thing. And I think we could kind of see this coming a mile away. Now, did we see people spending $15 million? No, I actually was kind of blown away by that. But it was clear that you attracted a lot of special interest and opposition. I can't even imagine facing what you faced. The former mayor endorsed both of our opponents, but he gave my opponent $700. He gave your opponent a million or two. I can't even imagine facing that kind of, of spending. It, it sort of means no matter how good a job you've done, it's very difficult in an election such as this. So, you know, we're, this is a bittersweet day for all of us, but we know you will bounce back, and you'll be dealing with the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic, but I'm hoping you also deal with the three Rs, rest, reinvigoration, and reinvention. So we look forward to seeing what you do next. We all love you, and we look forward to seeing how you can serve the public and the kids of the city of Los Angeles and beyond in the future. Thank you for everything that you've done for all of us.
And to my dear friend and colleague, I want you to know that it has been an honor to, to serve with you. You and I work closely, heavy as the head that wears the crown. And I want to say this to you, as president, you were never a manager, you were a leader. And I think that's what you were elected to do, to lead. You didn't tell people what they wanted to hear. You told people what they needed to know. You believed that government was not about doing what you want to do, it's about doing what you have to do. And you did your best to take people places where they didn't think they wanted to go. And that's what a leader is, and that's exactly what you have been, Mr. Zimmer. And I know a little bit about leadership, and I can just say that as a friend, I will miss you, but as a courageous leader, I will miss you more. I hope that you are an inspiration to the rest of us, to be strong, to be courageous, and to do what's right, and to take people places where they don't think they want to go. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Mr. Zimmer, the president, one more round of applause.
Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. To my colleague and my friend, Ms. Martinez, very, very few people will ever know the, the time, those four years of crisis that, that we served together. The, the integrity and the passion and the heart that Nuri Martinez brings to our kids every day is unparalleled. And keep this, this progressive, wonderful defiance will help change a city. It helped change the school district, and I'm proud to call you my friend. Thank you for honoring me here today. To, to each of, of my friends on the council, this is an incredibly humbling honor to hear you speak about me, but really about our work together like this. I just don't even have, Mike put the challenge in front of me, to, to, to speak today. I don't have words to tell you how much I appreciate and how appreciate this honor, but more importantly, to every one of you, we have stood together. We have stood together on the most important issues facing the children of this city. And there has, there has never been, there has never been a moment, never been a moment where I didn't feel like I had the true brotherhood and sisterhood of this council, of this chamber, of, of your full weight and influence to try to do the right thing by our kids and their families. And we could go through, over the years, the, the work that I've had such an honor to be involved with, with each and every one of you across this city. And, and each of you, each of you, and all of you, make me proud to wake up every day, every day, to say I'm an Angelino, because I know who leads this city. I know your hearts, I know your souls, I know your passions. And it's a rare privilege to have been able to struggle and work together, side by side, on the most important issues facing our, our kids. And what you've said today, for Annika, myself, my amazing staff that's here, this incredible coalition, unlikely coalition, that stands not behind me, but with me, we appreciate all of your words. all of your words and all of your actions. And I appreciate your friendship. Since you brought up the election, I do just want to say this. I would, I would rather lose a thousand elections than compromise one ounce of my integrity and compromise the truth. And I just hope, I just hope that has nothing to do with the outcome. It has nothing to do with the outcome. It has to do with, with our souls. I just hope that this changes, not because of, of, not because I happen to lose, but because this is not the example we should be setting for our kids. And I just have two, two last things to, to say. Behind me are an amazing group of people. Each and every one of you know we couldn't do anything that we do without our staff, without the people who serve this city, who get an incredibly bad rap with words like bureaucracy. There are amazing people who do the work of our kids, the work of our district, the work of the city each and every day, and they deserve our thanks and our love and our appreciation. And we each have our families standing behind us, the people who love us. Annika, thank you for standing with me today and always. And I also have to say that when we almost lost public education in Los Angeles, there are many members of the House of Labor behind me. Our school employees and the leadership of their labor unions sacrificed in ways that no one ever thought imaginable and showed us the true heart and soul. Yeah, we have difficult negotiations. Yeah, there's a, there's, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a rap on, on labor, and, you know, that, that happens. I, I understand that in the world of the press and in the world of politics. But we know, and I know, and I want to speak the truth today, that this L.A. USD family puts our kids first. And if we didn't know that, we saw that in 2011 in a way that nobody ever expected. And I want to thank publicly, publicly, our L.A. USD family, our labor partners, for saving public education in Los Angeles with us. I want to thank everybody who's come as part of this unlikely coalition to be with me and with Annika, myself, here today. I want to end with a story if I could. It has to do with this building. In 2006, there was another moment of great anxiety for our immigrant community here in Los Angeles. And there was a huge and amazing march, the largest march at that point on a Saturday, I think it was March 25th. And a lot of us were there, and we thought that maybe there would be, you know, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, maybe seventy-five thousand people, and there were five hundred thousand people on the streets of Los Angeles, fighting for their dignity and fighting for their rights. And the next Monday, when we went to school, our kids all across the city, but Marshall High School as well, Marshall was one of the first, you know, they said, Zimmer, you, we're not, we're gonna walk today. We're not going to class, we're marching. And the assistant principal, Jorge Espinoza, and I, I was in similarly dressed today, I will never forget, I, I was, I like, once I realized they were marching to City Hall, I looked down, I was like, damn, I wore wingtips today, why? And, and we just said, well, we're gonna go with the kids. And, and we went. And we had the great honor of walking with our kids as they marched for their dignity. And they marched for their future, and they marched for their parents. And it got really heated, the, our brothers and sisters in, in the LAPD, it was a different time, and, and there were some heated moments, and we were able to, to, to contain that and, and control it and, and get the kids down here, all those three and a half long miles to City Hall. And then something happened. And those of you who know northeast, you know that there used to be incredible rivalry between Marshall High School and Belmont High School. It was a football rivalry, but it went much, much deeper than that. And there were, it was an intense conflict that existed between these two rival schools. I remember, we had about five hundred kids, and, and we were turning the corner over there, right, right over there at Temple. And then we saw, as we were turning the corner, that right over there on First, there was a large group of students from Belmont High School. And Espinoza and I looked at each other, and we were like, oh, no. Oh, no. What's gonna happen? And the kids started running towards each other, and he and I both panicked. And then we realized that our kids were running towards each other to embrace each other. And they embraced each other right here on the streets, right here in front of City Hall. Those rival schools, marching together, embracing each other, loving each other, understanding that what makes us turn towards each other is far greater than what turns us against each other, reminding us that we have so much more in common, so much more to fight for together than to fight against each other. And so, if I could say anything in this incredible moment that you and Ms. Martinez and each and every one of you have provided us, listen to our kids. They will guide us towards righteousness every time. We have the responsibility of creating sanctuary here in Los Angeles in this moment. Not only, not only a sanctuary against this president and his racist and broken immigration system.
No, no, wait, wait. No, whoever that is, please remove.
But we...
Disrupting the meeting, please remove her.
We...
Go ahead, Mr. Zimmer.
We have a responsibility to create sanctuary, not only for our immigrant families and their kids, but we have a responsibility to create sanctuary for love, sanctuary for language, sanctuary for history, the true history of our city and our country, and sanctuary for our families. And if we, together, we, the school district, we, the city, we, the county, create sanctuary in this moment, our kids will take us to places, our kids will take us to places that we never dreamed possible. And in fact, together, found, with the foundation of the sanctuary that we have, that we have the sacred obligation to create, and then led by their hearts and their truths, we can get to the beloved community in this city and be that Western light for a nation. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve our kids. God bless you all.
Thank you. Mr. Kokorian, I'd like to take the closed session items up right now.
We present the certificate to Ms. ...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought. I'm so sorry, Ms. Martinez.
Mr. Zimmer, on behalf of the children of the City of Los Angeles, thank you so much for being a friend, for showing up and speaking up for kids all across our city. You know I love you. This is not the end of, of us working together. And on behalf of the city, congratulations, and we wish you the best.
Item sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three, all considered by finance. The city recommends approval of, city, these recommendations on all of those matters. They are all settlements, routine settlements. If members have questions, we make them possible, otherwise they approve.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Very good. For item sixty-eight, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Frank Gallo et Sec, there is a recommendation for the property owner to transfer to the city the property rights needed for the Sixth Street Bridge Viaduct project. And in exchange, the city will pay for the property owner, or, excuse me, will pay the property owner an additional five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over and above the one point two five million dollars previously deposited with the state treasurer. For item sixty-nine, in the case entitled Irene Sylvester versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to pay one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in settlement. For item seventy, in the case entitled Laura Jackman versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to pay nine hundred thousand dollars in settlement payable in fiscal year 2017, 2018. For item seventy-one, in the case entitled U.S. Metro Group Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to accept a proposed settlement offer in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to be paid over five years. For item seventy-two, in the case entitled Penalty Waiver Claim of L.A. Clippers LLC, there is a recommendation to approve a waiver of penalties and interest for the 2016 tax year, and to approve refunds in the amounts of one hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars in penalties, five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars in interest, and any interest and penalties accruing since payment. Lastly, for item seventy-three, in the case entitled Joe Hunt et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to, to pay up to one point four million dollars in settlement.
Thank you. On those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And Mr. City Attorney, and Mr. Herman came into the chambers disrupting the meeting, using profanity. Mr. Herman, this is your one warning, do it again, you will be removed as well. I'd like to, at this point, call up Ms. Antonio Ramirez and Mr. Walsh. Ms. Ramirez, item sixty, sixty-five, sixty-seven, and then general public comment, Mr. Walsh.
Sixty-five, thank you very much. Los Angeles City will transfer the twenty thousand dollars to pay the outstanding ICE agents, INS, ATF, DEA, and National Guard to lawfully round up all the, the violent, nosy, jealous, wicked, uncivilized, filthy, chango, wetbacks, and gangbangers, who are racist hate mongers as well, and deport them, deport them, deport them. That's what I would recommend, that we would do, twenty thousand dollars. Sixty-six, the children account program should only be designated to true legal law-abiding American children. No chango wetbacks and no gangbangers, no dreamers. They are the next wave of domestic terrorists. Deport, 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 and protect the American children from ID theft. And sixty-seven, we demand that you transfer the twenty thousand dollars in overtime money to the LAPD Southeast Division to work in conjunction with ATF, DEA, and National Guard, and ICE agents, and the INS to do the roundups on foot, not by car, and lawfully seize all the violent, racist, hate mongering, chango Latino, wetbacks, and gangbanger pussies, pigs, and thieves between Broadway Boulevard and, and San Pedro Boulevard, on One Hundred and Ninth Street, One Hundred and Tenth Street, One Hundred and Eleventh Street, and One Hundred and Eleventh Place. Again, that is with the LAPD Southeast Division, and they do a wonderful job. And again, and what was the other number? You said sixty-seven.
Now, you, you went through your items, you can go to general public comment now.
Thank you very, very much. Right now, one moment, let me, let me get my page here. Oh, freaking, ah, can I get my, I'm sorry. Long live our outstanding president, Donald Trump, and Heffet, the great Moses, along with his elegant and beautiful wife, Melania Trump, and family. President Trump and his loyal and dedicated nuclear staff have formed a solid, valuable, worthwhile, overachievers, non-defeated, hard, and ethically disciplined, prudent, astute sharpshooters, troubleshooters with acute honing skills, highly skilled and utterly professional with a whole lot of class, to reinvigorate America by bringing back wholesome values, class, elegance, beauty, high standards, morals, culture, sophistication, wisdom, brilliance, joy, extreme excitement, and patriotism that kicks you right in the solar plexus with sheer exuberance and laughter. And again, he has, furthermore, he has rebuilt and made it a priority to...
Thank you. Thank you. Now, if I can get Mr. Walsh, if I get Ms., okay, Ms. Ramirez, I, give me Mr. Walsh on the screen, John Walsh. Ms. Ramirez, you're disrupting. Can I get John Walsh?
Give me the numbers.
Mr. Walsh, one A, one B, two, five, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, sixty-two, and general public comment.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, building safety? You do a good job. I'm not one of these white guys, you see? You're doing a terrible job. You're awful, you're awful. That's, that's a different kind of white guy. Number, number two, this is protest, street lighting. Again, you do an excellent job on street lighting, once you got rid of the carbon arcs. Number five, maintenance of, of street lighting districts, you do a, a good job on that. You don't see people coming up here and complaining about street lighting, do you? Except for the people get up here, I complain about everything, I'm a white guy, I don't like this place. Number fifty-six, this is more street lighting. And number fifty-seven, this is a, a hearing date for all the street lighting. And fifty-eight is more street lighting. And then number sixty-six, this is hiring a consultant. You've got a billion-dollar business here. You don't need any consultants. You need jobs for your friends. Is the name of the consultant here? No. Are they gonna talk about it? No. It goes to a friend. While all the reporters and the cameras stand up there with their finger up their ass, with your fingers up your asses. Number sixty-six, this again is instructions, what are you do, this is, again, sixty, this is sixty-six thousand dollars to hire a consultant. Do you give a syphilitic rat's ass? Who gets the job? Somebody will get it, and it will be somebody with, with the mayor's penis up his ass. That's what will happen.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh.
Mayor's ass is part of the city.
Mr. Walsh, come on.
Okay, number sixty-six, this is housing fund account number, selection, hiring a consultant, comprehensive analysis of the economic benefits and recommendation for implementing a children's savings account program in L.A. You know, they had a savings account program when I was in first grade. That was nineteen forty-nine. It was BS. It's BS now. We don't need the children to set up savings accounts, but we need the sixty-six thousand dollars, because the person who is gonna get this contract is a very, very good friend of Kern Price, and I'm sure he will kick back money, and Kern Price is not gonna deny it.
Let's give him his general public comment minute.
John Walsh, Hollywood Highlands. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm telling you right now, the city is out of control, and, but, we are not going to have the Olympics. The city is not going to hold the Olympics. The gangs control the city. Glenn Dake, the mayor's lover, gay lover, controls the city. There's nothing wrong with having a gay lover, but when you give him an MWD job, that's what's wrong with it. And Glenn Dake has an MWD job, but all the, Devon Maharaj, who I understand has changed to being gay, won't do a story on Glenn Dake. No one will do a story on Glenn Dake. He is the actual mayor of this city. Forget about, I've had, I've had as much sex with the mayor's wife as he has, which is none.
Okay. Mr. Herman, you have items one, two, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-five.
Well, now that I am here to speak on item number one, dealing with costs, violations, compliance in order, thank you, Mr. Weezer, for running out on us on CD fourteen, thirty-six, twenty East Union Pacific Avenue. Just another Trump of business off of Pacific Union Avenue at 1451 South Marisol Street. A simple lien of $400, but it constitutes a violation. So you put this infraction against a person, and now they fear becoming the next homeless person. And then I go to item of the same liens, but however, as you see, the budget man, eh-eh-eh, in CD two, eh-eh-eh, at fifty-six, fifty-three North Vantage Avenue. Well, yeah, you got taken advantage. Why? Because they...
Speak into the microphone, Mr. Herman.
Well, I'm doing my public speaking, sir. Thank you for interrupting me.
Speak into the microphone.
But dealing with North Vantage Avenue, as you see, as it intensifies my condition of inability, that, fuck you, CD two on item one. Then I go to item two, CD four, CD ten. What about CD ten? Let's talk about CD ten. An ordinance, first consideration relative to what? Improvement of maintenance? Well, look at all the chinchero throughout CD ten. Has it improved? Niggers walking around in trash. Then I go to item three, CD four, CD thirteen.
The Speaker didn't sign up for item three.
You, you're on item fifty-five.
All right, go to item fifty-five, rookie. Fifty-five. God damn, look at this page, it's so goddamn thick, Herman.
Stay on the item, or we can go straight to your general public comment.
Item fifty-five, CD three, fuck it. CD eleven, fifty-seven, fuck that one too, and fuck fifty-eight, and fuck item fifty-nine and CD two, eh-eh-eh, and then fuck all these items like CD three and sixty, CD four. This is why Trump sends Robin Hood to expose all these issues regarding communication.
Speaker's off top.
Okay, let's go to his general public comment. Give him his minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Now that the white nigger chair kicked me out, and I filed a stress-related injury against the City of Los Angeles, I just want to remind you that when that SOB Bloomfield wants to call people mental health, fuck all of you. Mental health is LAPD, Mr. Bloomfield, and Mr. Scott Weiner, the dick from Sacramento that wants to have 24-hour drinking till 4:00 a.m. Fuck Sacramento and your Assembly Bill Two in regards to your discrimination, Title II ADA to kick me out yesterday because I pledge allegiance to the flag. Fuck you, Herb Wesson, Jason Junior, for kicking me out.
Keep your voice down, Mr. Herman.
And in my last six seconds, fuck all you white niggers who continue to discriminate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Your time has expired. Thank you. You're now disrupting the meeting. All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Englander.
If I could, just briefly, I noticed we had some, a lot of guests here from people that have never probably been to council chamber, so I wanted to welcome you. And I also couldn't help but notice some of your expressions, and wanted to share with you, this is why this country is great. The fact that, the fact that we, we have men and women in uniform that has given the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms, and one of those is the freedom of speech. And you can actually almost say, well, almost anything. And, and we, and, not that we always welcome that, but it is one of the freedoms, and wanted to thank you here, and make sure, make sure that you got, you know, the full tour, if you will. And so, but thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Bonin, did you?
Oh, no.
So let's remove Mr. Bonin from the queue. Mr. Clerk, why don't we prepare to vote on items two, five, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight? So if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now let's vote on items sixty-five and sixty-seven. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's, Mr. Clerk, bring up item forty-eight. Let's vote on item forty-eight. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
If I could, where's Mr. Englander? Okay, get Mr. Englander for a minute. Let's go quickly to item sixty-two.
And I'll call on Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Members, if I could just, for a moment, have your attention. It was around February 17, 16, 2007, and I had misplaced my telephone. I found it later in the day, and I'm playing my messages, and all of a sudden I hear this voice say, hello, Councilman Wesson, I'm Senator Barack Obama, and I'd like to talk to you about announcing my candidacy for president. My people and I have selected an area in your district. And he didn't leave a callback number. Because I'm going, yes, yes, I will support that. It was, it was at a time when he didn't have the Secret Service. And that's why I distributed this, this photograph that I pulled out. I gave all of you guys a copy of this photograph. Security was basically, we had a handful of general services police officers, and the one big fella in the middle of this picture worked for me, and many of you know him as Big John. On the February 20th, the President of the United States to be, in fact, two-time President of the United States pulls up on Rodeo, Rodeo Road in my district, Rodeo Road, in a golden minivan, like soccer dad or a soccer mom would drive. Like I said, no security at all. I remember the very first conversation that I had with him was, should he wear a tie or not? The first interview, and the only interview that he gave that day, was to the Los Angeles Sentinel, which is the largest black newspaper west of the Mississippi. And the Sentinel is located about one block south of Rodeo Road. We had almost 20,000 people, and I, my guess is, there has never been 20,000 people at Rancho, Sienica Park, off Rodeo Road ever before. People walked for miles. It was the most diverse crowd that I ever saw. We didn't pick him or lobby him to come to us. Out of the entire state of California to announce his candidacy for president, he chose us at this location. Members, today, I have a simple motion that will instruct our city engineers to begin the work to change the name of Rodeo Road, which is located in the district that I'm blessed to represent, to Barack Obama Boulevard. Now, we have received, yeah, you give me a mercy round of applause, I see one. We have received support from all over. And if there are some concerns, Mr. Harris-Dawson, it's because people wanted a longer street. But what I have said to the people, it's not about the length of the street, it's about the significance of the street. It is about what happened on that street. So, members, I ask you to join me today in a unanimous vote to direct our engineers to begin this process. I commit to you that all of the homeowners will be contacted. We will find out what their thoughts are. We have had preliminary conversations with the two neighborhood councils in the area. They seem to be supportive. And I should also say, we informed the President's people, and he responded back, or his office responded back within eight hours to give us a contact person to actually work with. So please, I ask for an i-vote. Let's begin this process. We, my office in particular, have been trying to come up with a way to, to pay tribute to him, and I have to thank a guy named Joel from my community, not an African-American, who recommended that, that we do this, and it seems to be catching on like fire. So Joel, if you're listening, I want to thank you. This is the perfect tribute. Members, I request an i-vote.
With that, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll.
Pardon me, sir. Substitute motion sixty-two has been posted and circulated, and sixty-two will accomplish what the council president has requested.
And, Mr. President and Clerk, we're doing an online petition. People saying that they are in support, so just go to herbwesson.com, register your support for Obama Boulevard. Thank you.
And if we can open the roll on the substitute, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now we'll vote on it, on the actual item. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. That carries unanimously, and, 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 Mr. President, you didn't finish your statement on, when he asked if he should, he should wear a tie or not. He did not, as the picture you handed out. And so, in his honor, and in your honor, I did not today either. And with that, we'll go ahead and go with the, the next presentation. If we could have Mr. Gil Sadio, council member from the great one.
Okay. You guys ready? Before Barack Obama... That's a joke, everybody. There was Charles Fletcher Loomis, born in 1859. He passed in 1928. The Loomis Day Festival in northeast Los Angeles is a festival that takes the name from Charles Loomis, who actually walked 3,500 miles from Ohio to Los Angeles as a newspaper stunt in 1885. He was the first city editor of the Los Angeles Times. He founded the Southwest Museum, the first museum in Los Angeles to preserve the old missions of Southern California. He was a publisher of a literary magazine, Land of Sunshine Out West, and was an advisor to former President Theodore Roosevelt. He hand-built the Loomis Home, one of northeast LA's most cherished cultural monuments, where he hosted several art salons. Loomis was an early proponent of multiculturalism, an ardent advocate for the rights of Native Americans, and knighted by the King of Spain for his efforts to promote Spanish-speaking peoples and cultures in Los Angeles. He is the multicultural and artistic sensibilities of Charles Fletcher Loomis that Loomis Day seeks to honor and advance. Loomis Day celebrates the arts, history, and ethnic diversity of northeast Los Angeles through educational and cultural events, and an annual festival that draws the community together for a shared experience while providing a platform for cooperation among people of all ages and colors. Let me say this before I bring up the, our guest. Loomis Festival is really the essence of diversity in CD one. Charles Loomis was a pioneer. He was ahead of his time. He was a thoughtful man who embraced his reality. In a time of change in our nation, in a time of resistance to change, Charles Loomis would be here with us as part of the resistance. He would be an advocate for immigrants. He would be an advocate for Native American rights. He would be a person who really coveted and rejoiced the diversity of not just the First District, but the City of Los Angeles. And so, for us in the northeast, this is something that we look forward to each and every year. We are thankful to Jane and Elliot Sekler. They could not be here today, but they are the engine of our efforts around the Loomis Day, and are those leaders of the Loomis Day Foundation, which puts us on every year. It continues to grow. Our office is committed to it, and is part of the type of cultural renaissance that exists in the First District. It's something that people look forward to. It launches off our summer events. It will be part of that with our Latin Jazz Music Festival, with our orchestra, with our concerts. The First District, if you want to listen to music and see culture, please join us in the First any weekend, because we have a whole menu of events that rejoice our diversity. With that, representing the Loomis Day Planning Committee, let me introduce Margaret Borto.
Thank you, Councilman Sadio.
Thank you, Councilman Sadio. And the president up there changes every time something happens, so I'd like to honor you too, Mr. President, and the rest of the, the council members. We have just celebrated, the first weekend in June, we have celebrated our 12th festival. We started off as just a few little bands on the first Sunday in June 2006. We had a few community tables and thought we were doing just the most wonderful thing the northeast had ever seen. We have graduated now to three days involving not only music and the community tables still, but we've involved the youth, we've involved film, we've involved art exhibits, and of course, we have our continuing education for schoolteachers and our poetry events ongoing throughout the year. We have rested. We are going to get started again come October. And by the time the first weekend in June rolls around again, we will be working full-time on this. You may see that some of us are a little gray on the top. We have gotten some younger involvement and hopefully will take over as, as we age and become a lot more tired. But we're still in there, we're still working very hard. It is an all-volunteer organization, and some of our volunteers may work just a couple of hours, but we have a great person working for those volunteers. I would also like to thank Freddie Seja and Sylvia Robledo and the rest of Councilman Sadio's office, because without this help, we couldn't do it. Thank you.
Speaking of Freddie Seja, he did an incredible job this year. Thank you, Freddie. Our media partner to help us, consistent with the values and ideas of diversity, our media partner is KVA, KVA Telemundo. And with them, I'd like to bring up Raul Becerra Yamas, who does the PR for this event and makes sure that the very significant and huge Spanish-speaking community of Los Angeles is dialed in on the Loomis event. Raul, please join us.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I'm proud to have been born and raised here in this great city of Los Angeles and committed to give back to my community through my talent and our PR firm, Be Yamas PR. And none of this could be possible without the continued support of my colleagues and good friends at KVA Telemundo, Canal 52. Thank you, guys, always for your, your support. Thank you very much. Very honored today.
Thank you. And Enrique, please come up for Telemundo. Enrique Chieba.
Muchas gracias por este importante reconocimiento a Telemundo 52. We celebrate community, tradition, art, and this is what the Loomis Festival does. So, we're really happy to be part of this festival every year, and we hope to be part of it next year again. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias. Thank you, sir.
So, on behalf of a very grateful city and a grateful northeast and CD One, for Loomis Day Foundation, thank you today, June 28.
Thank you very much.
There's all our photographers. Good morning. Okay.
We're going to take more photos in the back. Because we're bilingual here.
Mr. President, at this point in time, would you like to reconsider the ordinances adopted earlier with 11 members?
Yes, I would, please. Let's go ahead and take those.
Very good, sir. Those would be items 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 59, 60, and 61.
All right. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes. Mr. President, those ordinances are now before you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and now open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we've got another presentation, a special one, from council member David Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and thank you to everyone patiently waiting today. I am proud to join my colleague and co-presenter, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, in recognizing the tremendous work of the Resist March and its volunteers during LGBTQ Heritage Month. This year, tens of thousands of Angelinos gathered to celebrate America's rich diversity and to march in solidarity against hate and bigotry. I was proud to join over 100,000 Angelinos through the streets of Los Angeles to West Hollywood. Traditionally, the LA Pride Parade is held in West Hollywood to recognize the contributions, experiences, and identities of the LGBTQ Americans. However, given the threats from the Trump administration, we are fighting back. In Los Angeles, we don't tolerate diversity, we celebrate it. This year, the LA Pride Parade returned to its founding roots in 1970 and transformed into an act of resistance. The Resist March was born. The success of the Resist March is due to the efforts and coordination of the countless staff, volunteers, and community groups and city departments. And one of our very key supporters of the Resist March is our very own Councilmember, Mitchell Farrell.
Thank you so much, Councilman Rue. And colleagues, it's such a pleasure to be here. And I, I got to tell you, as the resistance drags on, it's ever more important to stay strong, determined, and relentless in resisting intolerance, resisting misogyny, resisting racism, resisting discrimination, resisting mean-spiritedness. And that's what the Resist March was all about. It was a proper, I think it was a proper evolution of what had been traditionally the Christopher Street West Pride Celebration at a time when the very values that we stand for in this country and our own U.S. Constitution are under threat. And let's not kid ourselves. All you have to do is read the paper every day, multiple papers, multiple credible news sources, and see that this country is in deep, deep trouble. And if we don't get active at the local level and speak out and speak forcefully and be strong and not accept anything other than equality for everyone, no matter who they are, where they're from, what language they speak, or what religion they practice, then we're all going to be in even deeper trouble than we are now. And that's what this is about. So, I want to commend the organizers of the Resist March, Christopher Street West Organization, all of the city departments that participated to make this successful, of course, all of the participants, all of the volunteers. I want to thank WeWorks that helped host the reception in the 13th District where the Resist March kicked off there near Highland on Hollywood Boulevard. The traditional location, or the historic location, I should say, of where the first LGBT Pride Parade happened in the summer of 1970. So, we have a rich history and tradition in the LGBTQ movement here in Los Angeles and in the 13th District, and I couldn't have been happier. I also want to thank the Hollywood Museum for being an official part of the Christopher Street West Celebration this month with their exhibit, Reel to Reel. The, the movement is growing, the awareness is growing, and it couldn't come at a better time. Now, back to the departments and bureaus. I want to thank West Bureau Chief Dennis Cato of the LAPD. I want to thank Hollywood Troll Captain Jonathan Pinto, the very youthful Jonathan Pinto right here with us. I want to thank the Department of Transportation, Edward Yu and Armin Kamishian. Thank you so much. Bureau Street Services, Karen Kishida representing the Investigation and Enforcement Division of Bureau Street Services, all of our first responders who assisted with the emergency and medical needs. I also want to thank my incredible team, led by Dan Holden of my staff, who was point in the office for the march. Dan is standing right there. You got a sense of Dan's talent, because he played the piano when we did the LGBT Pride Heritage Month kickoff right here in Chambers earlier in the month, helping to connect the amazing Brian Pendleton right here and his team with city staff to ensure that this event went off without a hitch. And as much as we were resisting and protesting and, and, you know, raising our frustrations, it was ultimately inspiring. And let's not forget that. It was inspiring, because we are growing a movement. And that movement is what will lead the way to enlightenment across this city, this state, and this country. And that's what we stand for in Resist. So, thank you so much, Councilmember Rue, for bringing this presentation to bear and onward and upward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, the man who made all this possible, who had an idea, who came to me many months ago and said, "Councilmember, would you be able to support, you know, I have an idea about a small, little march," that just grew and grew and grew. And now, I'd like to welcome Bri, the Brian Pendleton, founder of the Resist March.
Of course, I, I want to thank Councilmembers Rue and O'Farrell for jumping on board early. And the, the way you get them to jump on board early is, you know, the, the power behind these guys. And again, I want to mention Esteban and, and Dan and Tony and everyone else who, who helped support us. It, it really helped put a win in our sails. I mean, it's a crazy idea to decide to march in a city. It's an even crazier idea to march through two cities. And so, starting in Los Angeles and, and marching into West Hollywood was, was quite a feat. But, but we needed to do it. You see, our community is under threat. It's not just the federal government that's telling us what to do. It's state governments telling us where we can go to the bathroom, telling us if we can or cannot shop in places, telling us where we can live and where we cannot live. We are absolutely under threat, and we must be the resistance. And when the resistance call was made, I had 65 amazing committee members, many who are standing right behind me, who made this happen. And I, please, let's give a big round of applause for them. We said that we wanted to gather. We wanted to also lend our gigantic, iconic rainbow flag to anyone who felt under threat, anyone who felt that America's strength was its diversity, anyone, people of faith, people of color, no matter if you have a gender or don't have a gender. You belong with us, because we know together we are stronger. Now, when you close the streets of Los Angeles, they're very, very serious about what time you can get on those streets and what time you have to leave. And what that meant was that not everybody who deserved to speak could speak. There are hundreds of people that live in Los Angeles that have been at the forefront of our movement. There's somebody in this room today that I have the biggest regret of not letting speak, because he has spoken so well and has been on the forefront of our movement for a long time. And I just want to take a moment, and if we could have a round of applause for why we didn't hear from him, we know that he was there with us in spirit, and that's Councilmember Bonin. Thank you very much. Hearing you speak today and the, the love that you had for Zimmer was incredible. Knowing what you've done for our community is amazing. I got to go to the Venice Pride, and it was beautiful. And we need more people like you as public servants, and we're very grateful for you. So, thank you. You know, finally, I want to say that the movement is not over. We have a long way to go. The Women's March inspired us to create Resist March, and we must pass the baton on to the next thing, and we must keep fighting. But the one thing that I'm incredibly proud of is that we had 100,000 people show up on the streets, we marched to West Holly, to West Hollywood, but the press went nationwide. It went worldwide. I got calls from North Carolina. I got calls from Nashville, Tennessee, where kids are hearing that who they are is not good enough, where the LGBTQ centers are being burned to the ground, where they're being told where they can go to the bathroom. And what they saw, what's most important about what they saw is that Los Angeles is indeed a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ community. And who makes that happen? You make that happen, and we are very grateful, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, before I present to Brian Pendleton for making the Resist March possible, I just want to again reacknowledge, I mean, this was a huge logistical challenge on the city side, but, and it was evident of the tremendous success. So, again, I want to just acknowledge our city family, the Los Angeles Police Department, the Department of Transportation, the Los Angeles Fire Department, and the Bureau of Street Services, and of course, from my own office, who was also part of the organizing body and my communications director, Esteban Montemayor. With that said, thank you very much for doing what was so necessary to be done, the Resist March.
All right. Let's go ahead and turn it over to general public comment. Lucille? Sir Lucille? No longer here? Jaclyn Richardson? Come on up.
I have a complaint. It's outside this building, that way. There are women of all ages, sizes, colors, fat, skinny, short, tall, all races. They look like they're pregnant. There are too many of them that look like they're pregnant. If you want, if you wanted to see them, you can't look real quick like that. You have to look real good. And they're all stages of pregnancy. There's something wrong with that. That's not normal for this city or any other city. Women of all ages, colors, sizes, shapes, pregnant. And you can't look real quick like, you have to look good. And some of them try to hide that. I don't know what the problem is or why, but they do know, they have to know why that's going on. It, it's been going on for a while, and I hope somebody gets to the root of that problem.
Raquel? No longer here. Okay. Okay. Item 1C, please. Have any common cards on one? Miguel Sotero? Is Miguel still here? Okay. No longer here. We'll go ahead and note and file your card. Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on 1A and 1C. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Next item, please. Forty-four for Coretts. Mr. Coretts, you called 44 special?
Yes. And I just wanted to, to at least clarify as we look at this issue, whether site plan review... innovation not apply to any mandate of affordable housing to be fully market rate? And if the site plan threshold is changed, does that not also change the entire threshold and sequoia review, which has much broader potential implications, particularly if it doesn't apply to affordable projects? So, I do have a better concern about that. So, I guess if this is going to be a report back on these issues, that's one thing, and I hope that the President and the Senate would be directed, we're taking affirmative action to implement this, and I would not be against a court setting of a proposal on this, so maybe we can understand better the course of action.
Yes, Ken Bernstein with Department of City Planning. Happy to address the questions that have been raised. The site plan review threshold of 50 units that's cited in the motion is one that applies to all development types in the city, not only units that are affordable housing units specifically. The motion, as our department read it, was meant to address site plan review comprehensively. That's how it was directed. The committee reports that are before you today do ask for a report back from the Department of City Planning, so we will have an opportunity to lay out a variety of policy options for the council. We are looking at site plan review in very tailored ways for affordable housing, such as for permanent supportive housing, which is currently a key city priority. And we will be looking at these issues as well through our Recode LA effort, our new zoning code, which is creating new processes and procedures, as well as our Community Plan Update Program, now that the department is significantly ramping up the pace of our community plans. And that gives us an opportunity to look at geographic variation across the city. Downtown is a very different context than some of our hillside or more rural areas of the city.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and particularly the geographical disparities that there are throughout the city will be important to look at. I know in my district, probably in the other districts, there are buffer areas between barbed-wind zones and multifamily zones, in which a large development like this would really be very destructive of an entire barbed-wind zone area. And the bigger we make those, the larger that problem becomes. So, maybe if that's incorporated into rezone process, and if there are step-ups, those sorts of things, that will help that problem. But I anticipate that that will all be in the report back. Thank you.
Mitchell?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you. Yeah, just for clarity, I'm the second of this motion, and I submitted a letter shortly after it was introduced clarifying that my intent and support is solely on the basis of affordable housing for revising the site plan review to 100 units. So, I'm in complete agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Sadio, yes, there you are.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you. I was just going to rise and say ditto to what the three of them have just said. So, that's all I need to say.
Yeah, Mr. Sadio.
Well, let me rise to say ditto plus. First of all, I have absolute confidence in the department and their intellectual capacity to come back and report on this. But members, let's be very clear. We are in a housing crisis. We need 100,000 units of housing. People are sleeping on the streets of Los Angeles. We have a crisis of which we have high rents and we have low income. Working men and women cannot live in the city in which they live and work, and we have to do something about it. And one of the greatest challenges that we have in this city and the state is that we pass a law, and then we act as if it's going to be the right law for all times. So, we do a rent stabilization ordinance in the '70s, and then we leave it at that. We do this in 1990, and here we are 27 years later and wondering if it works for us or not. I don't get that. I think we should always be forward-looking when we make laws, but the fact of the matter is that some need to be reviewed and to be refreshed and to be redone so that they deal with our current realities. And I think that's true in so many different areas. Let me tell you, I think one of the problems in many instances that we have is not the laws, but it's the abuse of the laws. But let me tell you one of the problems that I have with this specifically at 50 units. When I was first elected to this office, we came in and we had a project that was set to go. 80 units on three blocks on three city parking lots, 100% affordable, home ownership components, low-income home ownership components to it, within the HPOZ, a block away from a train stop, across the street from a bus stop, and across the street from the district's new headquarters. Had this site plan review been at 100 units, those units would be built. But instead of what we got was an abuse of SEQA. For 800 bucks, somebody files a claim. Four years later, nothing's been built. The developer cannot afford to build, and not only because he cannot afford to build that project, he can't afford to build his other project on Alvarado. He's going out of business for practical purposes as it relates to us and our ability to engage this developer, and nothing's being built. And then people ask, "Well, what's the problem?" Yes, we have HHH and we have H, but if we cannot expedite and move our processes forward to build housing in this city, then it's not going to happen. And so, this is incumbent upon us to move forward. This is part of House LA, this is part of the homeless plan that we have. It's been embodied and incorporated in its entirety in the homeless plan. And so, I also join all my colleagues here to ask for a report back. I'm sensitive to the disparate nature of our various districts, but looking at this citywide, I feel compelled for us to really think seriously about our commitments to build housing in the city and to do all that we can utilizing this great department that we have to help guide us through the zoning process. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's approve. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 63, called special by Councilmember Bonin.
Okay, I'd like to bring up the department as well as the CAO to the table. Mr. Pickle, you can come up. Come on up, anyway. You're already standing. There's a seat waiting for you. Tom, thank you very much for being here. All right. So, to start off, we have a couple ways to start this off. We can go ahead and, why don't we do this? Why don't we have you guys give us the opening on this? Certainly, there's going to be, you hear a lot of questions on the process, so walk us through that, if you would, the entire process and how this took place. And I think that's what many of the colleagues certainly have a lot of questions and concerned on that they're going to ask as we see their names start popping up on the queue. Mr. Llewellyn, if you want to start us off, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich Llewellyn, the interim City Administrative Officer. I'm here with the DWP management, Tom Coltes from our Labor Relations Staff, and the ratepayer advocate. The president of the Board of Water and Power was here as well, and he apologized, but he just had to leave. He's been sitting here for the last couple of hours. Today, we are recommending your council's approval of the proposed five-year agreements with IBW, which represent 10 bargaining units at DWP. Our office has worked closely with members of the ERC, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, and the management of the Department of Water and Power in negotiating these proposed contracts to address the fiscal and business needs of the utility. These contracts are the results of many ERC meetings, six, this was on the agenda six times, many, many more meetings between representatives, management, and our labor partners. As with all of our MOUs, those negotiations are conducted at the ERC and in confidence. When we reach a tentative agreement with our labor partners that the ERC has blessed, the matter then goes from the union to its members. If the members ratify, it comes back to your council for approval. This contract actually had an additional step because it involves the DWP, where there was a public meeting at the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, which approved the contract as well. This is the way we do all of our labor agreements. They are negotiated, in fact, at the ERC. We don't support negotiating in the press. We think it actually isn't good for the city or for our labor partners. Let me outline the basic provisions and philosophy behind the proposed contracts. First and foremost, fiscal responsibility, fiscal stability. We believe that the proposed long-term contract provides both for DWP's customers, our ratepayers, and that DWP can afford the contracts within its existing budgetary plans. We are pleased that the ratepayer advocate is here to sort of give his two cents on that as well. Second, we want to see the ratepayer support for the JTI, JSI trusts eliminated. This contract does that. There will be no more ratepayer funds supporting these initiatives. Third, DWP had specific recruiting and retention issues. Specifically, DWP is losing employees, particularly the class of worker we commonly think of as linemen, to its utility competitors who, quite frankly, pay more. This contract addresses that matter in two ways, by raising the base pay for that position and that position only, and matching in some circumstances the double overtime, double time overtime that its competitors routinely pay, its competitors who serve over 80% of the local utility market. In addition, there's a proposed change to the vesting schedule for the DWP pension plan. While that actually has limited cost, it will assist DWP in recruiting and retaining mid-career employees, particularly in the white-collar ranks, and provide an additional incentive to retain linemen after they finish their apprenticeship program. Fourth, there are very specific contract individual issues addressed, which are not sort of systemic. For example, the bonus for the limited number of workers, human external cargo workers, who fix one pole from a helicopter to another pole and have to, quite frankly, take their life in their hands. And that bonus is only paid while they're doing that human external cargo work. Finally, the contract is beginning to assist or ensure that DWP management has the workforce it needs for the changing nature of the utilities business. This starts with the union's agreement to annual performance reviews and career development plans to allow management to assess each employee on a regular basis and work towards succession planning changes. This also ensures that the contract means what it says, no side rules, no informal agreements, when it comes to bidding for the clerical, technical, and administrative positions. I wouldn't attempt to argue to your council that the proposed contracts are perfect. Every successful labor negotiation has give and takes. We did not get all we wanted. Particular, we did not achieve the goal of having additional employees contribute to the cost of their health care. We continue to share that goal. We will continue to push for it. We will not always be able to achieve it. We also need to work towards greater workforce efficiency, something that Mr. Pickle is particularly concerned for. On the other hand, our labor partners felt that they deserved larger raises following their last contract. In the end, we recommend these agreements because we believe them to be fair to the employees and fair to the utility. We are not recommended that these contracts form the basis for negotiations with other city employee groups. It's a longstanding position of this office that each bargaining unit presents its own challenges and must be considered individually. We don't address our Los Angeles police officers the same way we address our sanitation workers, nor should we. We urge your ayes votes on this contract. We're here to answer any questions.
I'm sure there's going to be many. We'll start off with Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much. Thanks for all of your work on getting to this point. A few questions, not sure all of them can be answered in open session, which is, I think, one of the challenges we have because I know this wasn't agendized to go in a closed session. And I think there are going to be lots of questions about this. So, if I stray into that territory, let me know. Do we have to act on this today? Must we vote on this today? That's my first question.
Councilmember, there is not a contract deadline that requires action today.
Thank you. So, my next question is then why the rush?
Councilmember, we urge your support for these contracts. We think they're fair. They've been the result of months of negotiation, I think six meetings of the ERC, your bargaining table. And we believe it's particularly appropriate to address the matter of the Joint Training and Joint Safety Institutes before the last payment is due under the old contract. We think there is great value in the long-term relationship with IBW being put into rest for the utility, which is in the midst of transformation to a 22nd century utility and the toughest times this management team will face. We believe the contracts, like many, were reviewed by your ERC, reviewed by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, and are before you today. We urge your support.
I'm not arguing your rationale as per the details you just gave and explaining them to us, but I am very aware that there is a perception out there from ratepayers in the media, it's all over the place, about skepticism on why so quickly, when there hasn't been a committee hearing on this, would we vote on this today? I know that four years ago, in the contract negotiations that were adopted that are now expiring this late summer, early fall, I think we did all of this business in the month of August, maybe ratifying it just before Labor Day or maybe just after, and in an abundance of deliberation and negotiation and communication. So, I think that's a real issue, and I have concerns about that. So, some specific questions. How and why did negotiations lead to 4.5% increases by the end of 2017, by the end of this year? Adding the two...
Councilmember, I don't want to go into sort of the details of the sort of confidential negotiations, but I think it's, we're all fair to say that our labor partners requested more. The city proposed less, as often happens in labor agreements, and we ended up in a place where we believe that the first year, which is relatively similar to, especially coming after their three years of zeros in the two, they argued very strongly that their members expected more and that the long-term nature pegged to CPI with a cap is a reasonable compromise.
I mean, it's been argued, or at least portrayed in the media, that any contribution to health care was a nonstarter from the very beginning. And if that is the case, why was that accepted? It's like, okay, if that's a nonstarter, then we'll agree to that. In other words, what was the negotiating piece to that when that has been so paramount? And I know that you say that that is a discussion that will live for another day, but it really won't live for another four years once an agreement is adopted.
And councilmembers, we said in our opening, we agree with you. We're disappointed we did not get employee contribution to health care. That's a value of your council, it's a value of our office, it's a value of the ERC, Mayor's office.
ratifying it just before Labor Day or maybe just after, and in an abundance of deliberation and negotiation and communication. So I think that's a real issue, and I have concerns about that. So some specific questions. How and why did negotiations lead to 4.5% increases by the end of 2017, by the end of this year? Adding the two...
Councilmember, I don't want to go into sort of the details of the sort of confidential negotiations, but I think it's, we're all fair to say that our labor partners requested more. The city proposed less, as often happens in labor agreements, and we ended up in a place where we believe that the first year, which is relatively similar to, especially coming after their three years of zeros in the two, they argued very strongly that their members expected more, and that the long-term nature pegged to CPI with a cap is a reasonable compromise.
I mean, it's been argued, or at least portrayed in the media, that any contribution to health care was a nonstarter from the very beginning. And if that is the case, why was that accepted? It's like, okay, if that's a nonstarter, then we'll agree to that. In other words, what was the negotiating piece to that when that has been so paramount? And I know that you say that that is a discussion that will live for another day, but it really won't live for another four years, once an agreement is adopted.
And Councilmembers, we said in our opening, we agree with you. We're disappointed we did not get employee contribution to health care. That's a value of your council. It's a value of our office. It's a value of the ERC, Mayor's Office. We didn't get everything we wanted.
And I would question why you didn't push back from the very beginning, if that was a nonstarter at the very beginning. What was the challenge back to that position? I'm just curious.
Again, Councilmember, we pushed on everything. So I don't want anyone to understand that we didn't push on every term. We pushed on everyone, and they pushed back on everyone. And we ended up in the middle, in what I believe is a reasonable deal. And I don't think, you know, we could have done better.
Shifting a little bit, how many bargaining units does the city negotiate with in general? I should know this, but off the top of my head.
Forty-two. We're trying to remember if it's 41 or 42 or 44.
In the 40s, low 40s.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. And of these bargaining units, do we have a sense of how many of them pay for some sort of health care contribution? Do we have that number out of the 41 or 42?
I have the chart right here, sir, but I didn't count it up. It's about 34% of the employees, and I have to my chart here, sir, but I haven't counted up. It's about half of the units, relative to the smaller units, pay more than...
And on average, what's the percentage?
Most are 10% of health care, but not all, like your employees pay, sir.
Are some more, some less?
No one's more.
No one's more, okay.
Although, as you recall, the police and fire contracts partially have a cap on the subsidy. It's slightly structured a different way. And as you know, your employee organizations certainly argue that they have been contributing to health care by things like increasing co-pays. So as you recall, the last conversation we had around the coalition contract, they certainly argued strongly that their sort of increased employee cost was roughly equal to actually some contribution to health care by making principally co-pays more expensive, and some of the provisions that used to be free no longer free.
And I get with 41 or 42 bargaining units that they're all dissimilar in many ways in nature, and I get that. A concern I have also is, is this a template that we may use into the future? Because I believe that other bargaining units will assert that it is.
Now, Councilmember, I encourage, certainly the instructions from the ERC to us in our office, is that is not to be the case. Our office's philosophy is it shouldn't be the case, and historically has not been the case. Your council does treat different units differently, and it should. And if we're in an age where, for example, we can't recruit librarians because they're not getting paid enough, and the county's getting them all, we'll need to address that. You know, they should be treated separately, and we do.
Mr. O'Farrell, why don't you press your button again, though?
This is the last question, and I wouldn't even need to press it again.
Go ahead.
So the linemen are talked about as the ones that keep getting recruited away after we train them. Why not focus more on that vulnerable segment of LA DWP employees than given across the board equal increase over the years?
Certainly, management can address that as well, but there are different, as you know, IBW represents 10 units. They represent almost all employees at DWP and all different kinds of classes. They traditionally have negotiated as a team with all classes. This contract does include differentiation. The rate change is only for the lineman class. The overtime does not apply to the administrative, fiscal, non sort of construction-type employees. So there are class differentiations. I think it's a value of your council and certainly our office to try to negotiate not every position the same, but that's going to be a sort of an ongoing battle with IBW. And there are some in this class, not as many as you or I might like. Again, it ends up in the net.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a concern about the perception of why the vote, why today. That's a concern I have.
And that's fair. Okay, but before I call on the other members, let's go through the presentation. I think I want to hear, it's fair that we hear from Dr. Pickle, David, I mean, so, and then I have a few other members on the queue. But so however, Mr. CAO, you want to deal with this, then we'll deal with it. So why don't you walk us through your thoughts on this?
We have some PowerPoints to summarize what I'm saying. In the 2015 rate review, my office, the Office of Public Accountability Ratepayer Advocate, worked jointly with DWP to complete a first-ever joint OPA-DWP total compensation study comparing DWP to other public and investor-owned utilities. The compensation comparisons progressed from a salary-only comparison that was used in the 2012 rate review for a limited number of classes to a relatively comprehensive, on the high end of complete compensation study, that looked at salary, bonus, retirement, health, and other benefits using industry standard measures. This study is available at the office's website at opa.lacity.org. Overall, based on a comparison of the classes, the classes covered 60% of the employees, which is considered to be very good coverage. With the public and investor-owned utilities nationwide, DWP was median. Some classes within the group were better than the industry peers, some classes were worse, but taken across all classes, it was median. The Office of Public Accountability Ratepayer Advocate supports the proposed DWP MOU amendments with a specific recommendation. Thank you. As agreed during the total compensation study effort, further benchmarking work is needed to analyze DWP productivity so that DWP can adapt to rapidly changing industry changes. I think it's important to stress DWP's key goals. That's hiring and retaining employees to meet DWP's business goals. DWP has struggled to get up to the levels of investment it would like to be making, and this process is, or employment is an important aspect to that process, and there's now more competition for new and existing employees than we faced in well over a decade. Unlike most of the last decade, the economy is doing well with the unemployment rate at 4.3% nationally, close to the best levels in three decades, and inflation is starting to creep up. National CPI was at 1.3% for 2016, and LA's core inflation rate without energy and fuel mid-last year was at 3.3%, reflecting a higher cost of living increase than the U.S. overall. The MOU addresses the competition for specific employee categories facing extraordinary hiring threats above and beyond these cost-of-living changes that are included, or increases that are included in the overall MOU. So I stress the wage and escalation rates and other terms are in a reasonable range, given the overall economy and the results of the total compensation study. And for emphasis, I have two statistical slides showing where we stand in the overall economy. The first is a slide I call the Mountain of Pain, looking back at unemployment rates nationwide, where at the worst of the recession, all but two states had unemployment rates above 6%. Now, only two states have unemployment rates above 6%. California was in that worst group where unemployment rates were above 11%. To look specifically at California, the arrow in that chart points at California's unemployment rate, which was over 6%, or over 12% at the peak of the recession. Our unemployment rate in California is now at a 47-year record low of 4.7%. So the economy, at least in terms of the unemployment picture, is only matched one other time in this 47-year period at 4.7%.
The CAO really gave a good, comprehensive summary of this. I just wanted to kind of add, really think that the COLAs cover the general employees. The retention was extremely important. We are having major challenges retaining linemen, in fact, to the point of when they graduate the program, they are immediately contacted by other utilities to pull them away, and we're losing about 50% of our graduating linemen at a cost of about half a million dollars per lineman to train them. The elimination of the trust was extremely important, that that stopped and was removed. And then finally, just performance evaluations can now be provided to the 9,000 members of IBW, and we can also create career development plans so that we can address the succession planning efforts that we face there. So we think this is a very comprehensive, time-consuming process to get here, and that it represents something that we very much support.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just give a little bit of context of where I'm coming from here. I fundamentally believe that our linemen deserve a raise. I think they went several years without it. They risk their lives doing vital work for the city of Los Angeles, with which we cannot function as a city. So I am not at all opposed to that. But I do still have a lot of questions, and I'm very concerned about this process and a lot of the unanswered questions. I'm going to ask some of the questions Mr. O'Farrell did, because I just didn't hear a complete enough answer. It may be possible that it's not possible to give us a complete enough answer in open session, and then we should agendize this for a closed session meeting, because with what I have right now, I'm not prepared to vote yes, which, not saying that's where I will end up ultimately, but I just have so many lingering questions. Mr. O'Farrell asked, and I'm going to ask a number of questions my constituents have been asking. He asked, what's the rush? And I didn't hear a real answer on why that needs to happen today, other than that there's some expiration of the trust funds or the trusts, the JTA. When did IBW ratify this agreement?
About two weeks ago, sir. I think it was June 19.
Okay. So, but we have until the end of September?
Correct.
So there's no contractual expiration urgency at all that requires us to vote today?
Yes, and, that is correct. There is not a deadline, sir. I think there is a value in resolving this earlier than on the heels of the contract expiration date.
Well, yeah, I mean, but the last week before council session and the last week before the contract expires are not the only options. There's the entirety of August, and there's the other three weeks of September, and the last week of July. I mean, there's many other options. This may be a question you can't answer completely, but Mr. O'Farrell sort of asked why no concession on health care. And I understand from the press accounts, which by the way is how I first heard about this coming to us a couple days ago, it was last week in the papers, that it was a nonstarter for IBW. Why was it not a nonstarter for us in the reverse?
Councilmember, again, asking our employees, seeking our employees to contribute to health care has been a value of your council and our labor negotiation process. We've not achieved it with every group. We did not achieve it last round with every group. It will continue to be in value, and we won't achieve it with every group. So I hear you that we should have bright lines, whatever that means. Normally, it's a give and take. We win some and we lose some.
But was there at any point, though, a standoff where we said, well, this is an absolute requirement for us, when they said it was a nonstarter for them?
Councilmember, I think your council, and certainly we went back to ERC repeatedly. The ERC gave us bargaining instructions. The ERC had that as a value. We reported to them along the way how our labor partners were responding to the entire package of things we wanted versus what they wanted. And the final instructions were that that was a disappointment, but okay not to achieve.
I'd like to add a little factual background from the total compensation study. Part of the reason we did a total compensation study is to allow consideration of trade-offs between the components of compensation. The salaries and the total compensation are both about median. Where things aren't median is, on health and other benefits, DWP is in the fourth quartile. On overall pension, if you combine the two tiers, it's about median. However, if you look at the first tier, where you're hiring new employees, that is at the bottom of the cheapest. The value of a first-tier pension is $86 per year. So if you average $86 per year per employee, from the employee's perspective, against the $22,000 per year in terms of the value of the health benefit, which is at the high end, you get something that's slightly below median in terms of overall benefit value.
I guess part of what I'm struggling with here is there's 10 different MOUs here?
Yes, sir.
The linemen, the retention issues are spoken to by three different of the MOUs?
Yes, sir.
I guess the problem I'm having is what Mr. Pickle's presenting is sort of omnibus information. The argument we're hearing, that the public is hearing, is omnibus information. We have a retention issue, but the retention issue isn't the issue for seven of the 10 MOUs, correct?
Correct. So what was, what we did here and looked at for retention issues, the items that were more specific to the alignment, and those were the items related to increasing the entire range of salaries for that classification, and then equalling what the vast majority of other utilities pay for overtime, which is double time. In fact, 80% of the other utilities in the state are paying the double time. So those just specific three units are the one, those had the retention sort of approaches, and then we looked at the total compensation for all of the 10 MOU classifications. But the components for retention were specific to just the three that included the lineman and some other field forces.
But the salary increases are a huge, what I've heard is when people have questioned the salary increases of up to 22%, the response I've heard is we have to do it for retention. So I'm assuming the pay raise is a retention strategy.
Overtime, absolutely, yes. If you start paying in general below market, employees do start leaking.
And the numbers I saw in the paper, from 13.2 to 22.3 by 2021, that applies to all 10 of the MOUs, not just to the three?
Correct.
Okay. And...
Ms. Bonin, you want to press your, look at your...
Yeah, I'll press it.
Or wrap it up?
I've got, I'll press again.
Then let me go to Mr. Sadiya.
I appreciate the comments made by my colleagues. I have a surprisingly little different perspective. Let me begin by congratulating you for your incredible efforts and say thank you. I have tremendous confidence in you, Fred, I may call you Fred, and I've relied on you in the past for decisions I make, and as you know, I was the only vote against the last rate hike, because I was thinking of my constituents, of the poorer elements of the city. But let me tell you about this, Mr. President, a couple points here. Negotiations, so negotiations are a series of agreements and trade-offs. And so, for example, this trade-off around the trust fund means that the union at one point said, we're not going to take this, but we're going to have this trust fund. Now that we've eliminated the trust fund, did we give the union back what they gave up, right? And that's what happens in every agreement. You get something and you give something else up. And so the question hasn't been asked is, well, the union gave up something back then for the trust fund. Did they get it back, right? And that's what this whole MOU is all about, right? It's a whole series of agreements that move forward, and we build on it each time, in our desire to make sure that we have the best working conditions for the men and women of the city of Los Angeles. On the question of health care, my experience, and I used to negotiate these contracts for SCIU for 40,000 employees, is that co-pays are really bad public policy, and they're really bad health care policy. Because if we have the premise that health care policy is to make sure people are healthy so they can come to work, co-pays are designed to control their visits to the doctor. so they can come to work, co-pays are designed to control their visits to the doctor. I'm not interested in that. So let me distinguish myself from those who think that co-pays are a good idea. I negotiated those contracts for 40,000 SCIU workers. We went the entirety of my time with SCIU without co-pays. We did not have the abuses that people claim will happen. In fact, we have the utilization that comes from the needs of the family. I believe that health care should be delivered based upon need and not financial ability to pay. And when you have multiple co-pays, and you have multiple children in your family, and you have multiple visits, and your family's at a different point in time, those co-pays can become deterrents. I don't want them to be deterrents for the working men and women and their families of the city of Los Angeles. And so I'm pleased that we don't have co-pays for about half of the city workforce, and would hope that we could get to the point that we don't have them for the entirety of the workforce. We are in a health care crisis in this nation, but I think it's in part a leadership crisis, because we have to really, we say we value health care for all. We need to talk about the quality and substance of that, and if it's not fully accessible, then we were limiting the health care. I don't want us to be in that business. I want us to be in the business, and I trust, the ratepayer advocate is here, he says we can afford this, and I trust that. So on economic policy, we say that we're on sound footing, and on fiscal, on health care policy and public policy, I would argue that this is the best policy for us personally, that health care without co-pays is a non-starter, and it should be a non-starter for us. I don't see any reason why, and I ask the question, why would we want it? I mean, I know the reality. It's a crisis in America. 20-plus million Americans are looking at losing their health care. But why would we want to walk down that road? And so I applaud you for those efforts. I was on strike a long time ago. We had an 11-day strike. It's a horrible thing. It has so much uncertainty and creates so much instability for someone's family and household. We were on strike once, and both the union and the county learned from it. We never went on strike again. In fact, the next agreement was done ahead of time, and I'm proud of that, and we should be proud of that. If we have a deal today, and it's good, then it's not going to get any better. Let's sign the deal. I'm ready to support this. If your work is done, and if the committee's work is done, and the union and the working men and women of the city have said their work is done, then let's sign this agreement so that they can have a great summer and know that the city has said to them, "We appreciate what you do for us. We appreciate your risk. We appreciate your hard work. We appreciate your commitment, and in return for that, we're going to give you stability and certainty for this summer, that this summer of 2017 is when we say to the workers, 'Thank you, and we're ready to sign this contract and ready to make this agreement on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, a grateful city of Los Angeles.'" Finally, we spoke earlier about a challenge here with housing, Mr. President.
Time, you have...
Yes, sir. Finally, let me say this. But we have a high-rent, low-income city, and that drives much of our housing crisis. And so there's a couple of ways, there's two ways to fix that. One is to build more housing, which will create affordability, and two is to raise the wages of the working men and women of the city. And this goes and helps us address that. And so I'm proud that we can raise the wages of the working men and women of the city so that they can afford to live in the city in which they work, in which they commit themselves, and I, myself, would be glad and happy to vote for this proposal, and I thank you for bringing it to us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sidiya. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, and I'm not sure if, how thoroughly the questions could be answered, but Councilman O'Farrell and Councilman Bonin had a lot of the questions that I had as well, but one question that wasn't asked, and the only question I'm going to ask, is about reopeners. Is this contract have no reopeners for both sides, assuming something, some pending crisis happens? Is there any reopener clause?
Councilmember, your staff asked us that, and we sent the information. We are very, we have been very rarely had some kind of reopener, and I think you're thinking of sort of for economic uncertainty.
Yes.
And the reason, I think, for that is because the union, I want to speak for all unions, if we're giving a reopener in year two or year three, our labor brothers want something bad. And we feel like this contract, which has a sort of a CPI cap on it, as well as a lower range in the outlying years, which the DWP feels it can afford, is better than having given up something to get a reopener in year two or year three.
So there is no reopeners?
There is not.
Yes, I just wanted it for the record that there is no reopeners in case, not going to happen, no financial analyst is saying this, but if the CPI raised to 10%, there's going to be no reopeners.
Well, Councilmember, if the CPI raises to 10%, us locked in at 4 is a...
Is a great deal, right. So I just wanted to make sure that there are no reopeners.
And it's a great deal for management, not for our employees.
And, you know, I concur with Councilmember Bonin that there needs to be, especially with the previous contract, some sort of raise or COLA adjustment given to our workers. And I think there are more than sufficient evidence regarding the retention and recruitment issue of linemen, so there's no qualms there. And I think, having looked at this contract, this contract appears reasonable. However, there hasn't been enough time or information given to allow for a real discussion. And, you know, that is my number-one concern, the lack of transparency, and in particular, no opportunity for community engagement or input. I mean, at the very least, making a presentation to the neighborhood council alliances and allowing for some sort of public discourse. And I do understand from your presentation and from our conversations that it's not necessarily required, and as Councilman O'Farrell asked about it, why it didn't go to a committee, like the personal committee I sit on, and their EAA or the fire chief, their contracts didn't also go to committee as well. However, I think there's a big difference here, and the big difference here is that there is a direct impact to ratepayers, and this will be highly scrutinized and looked at. And, you know, and I firmly believe, you know, it's a new time. It's the information age. Everything has changed. Everything is more transparent and open, and I believe bureaucracy has to adapt to this new world. We have to start adapting to this new world. And in a time when there is a deep mistrust of government, and we are doing everything in the city of L.A., and we've made tremendous strides in rebuilding that trust with our voters and our residents, I feel like we're going backwards. And this is going towards, I mean, this is not about the contract. This is just about the process, and this process is, in a way, an erosion of the public trust. So, thank you.
Mr. Buscayina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Mr. Rue, I agree with you. This process stunk. One cannot assume approval of a contract without proper vetting. We heard about this contract through a number of media reports. In the five years I've been here through city contracts, we were, my office, myself, were at least briefed on what to expect. On the question or the issue of retainment, with the police department, I know we've lost a number of my partners to other agencies because they offered incentives, flexible work schedule. One report came out from the media that the DWP lost only 100 employees over the last four years. So was, or is there a true retainment issue? Just, Mr. Wright, if you can just address that?
There is, and the retention issues were, as part of this contract, were focused on those areas where we're having retention challenges. Not only have we lost half of the linemen that have graduated from the apprenticeship program, we have 130, over 130 coming out in the next four years, anywhere between a couple of months from now and four years from now. And we are just keeping, even with the number of crews we have, we need to add 25% more linemen just to meet the standards that we need to respond to outages, to respond to infrastructure needs, and we keep training them, and they're literally gone within just a few months. So the retention aspects were focused on those three units of the 10 that were field employees, that are the ones that are picked off by other utilities. The other seven, we didn't, there were, only the COLAs are really addressed in those other seven. There aren't the same retention issues that we have with alignment.
Understood. So, Mr. Pickle, the same day I was sworn in to this office in January of 2012, it was the same day that this council or the council then confirmed you as the ratepayer advocate, and I was critical of the DWP when I ran for the seat and questioned some of the issues and also on behalf of the ratepayer. So let me ask you, Dr. Pickle, with this contract before us, will the ratepayer see an increase in their DWP bill?
One, DWP can answer the detailed question on that, but the proposed increases or a range of proposed increases were included in the rates that have already been approved. Given the fact that DWP is underspending quite more substantially than it would pay in increases, the, part of that underspending is flowing directly back to ratepayers. So will they see a net increase because of this? It's small in comparison to the amount that's flowing back because of the underspending.
So, DWP wants to chime in?
Yes, Councilmember. With regards to the rates and the budget that we do, we do a 10-year budget, actually, that we update annually as part of our normal budget process. When we look at the proposed MOU changes, while not everything was taken into account, we weren't aware of every item to be negotiated, much of it was, in terms of overtime and COLAs, were somewhat anticipated in our budget process and as part of our rate process. We are underspending right now in labor and non-labor areas. I think part of our challenge is, without the changes that we see for the proposed contract, especially for those critical classes, much of the work we want to do is part of our investment in our water infrastructure and power infrastructure, which was really a large driver for our rates, we really can't accomplish. We have difficulty getting contracts, there's a lot of competition with other utilities, and we have difficulty recruiting retaining staff. And that work is the bread and butter of what we do in our department, is to try and maintain that reliability for our customers, whether it's on the water side or the power side. So from a financial perspective, we've anticipated most of what you can see before you, and we are underspending now. And then from an operational perspective, we really believe that the proposed changes will help us bring the staff onboard so we can accomplish those work programs we look forward to.
And as far as in terms of competitiveness in this MOU, the MOU changes, what's being proposed, where would this place us with other investor-owned and municipal-owned utilities as it relates to total compensation, including salary, pension, and health insurance?
Okay. We're median now. The other utilities are getting COLAs similar, or actually, if you look back a couple of years, substantially larger than we're, than DWP is given. So we expect it will stay median. And to shift from median to the 75th percentile or the fourth quartile, it would take $40,000 in increases. So we're not, it's not a small step to go to the next quartile. We're dead in the middle of the pack, and it's likely we will stay in the middle of the pack.
Understood.
Check the time.
Yes, sir. Lastly, I mean, I do want to recognize the EERC, as though I indicated that, yes, it was a little challenged with how this was rolled out, with the process and the lack of transparency with, you know, the office and respective offices and even potentially neighborhood councils. I do know that this contract before us has achieved the city's objectives with the rate case projections and protects risk and floor and caps on CPI, no employer trust contributions, also builds upon the success of the last contract. Appreciate the work that's been done, and I appreciate the questions that were answered. Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. Share the sentiment of many of my colleagues here, who've expressed a variety of different sentiments, and I appreciate the work of the EERC. It is difficult for members who are not on the EERC, who come to this sort of what feels late, because we are not in the process. And, Mr. Lo, I appreciate giving me a briefing earlier. A couple of questions, and one is just a clarif, well, a couple of clarification. In the first year, who is getting that 4.3% raise? Is it across the board? Are the linemen getting the same as the clerical workers?
There's an across-the-board COLA for all the bargaining units, and then we are also adjusting the recruitment and retention thing so that there will be a change in the pay rate for linemen, and we're actually adjusting the overtime provisions, so they will be in the first year of the contract.
So the 4.3% is across the board? 4.1?
4.5, I guess.
4.5% is across the board. So that is, for me, the issue...
And again, there also, we will no longer be paying into JTI, JSI, which is a reduction.
Right. I get the JTI thing, that's great. I mean, that's on the positive side of good negotiating. On the negative side, of course, the health care is hard to swallow, because it's been a big priority for all of us to try to get folks to contribute to the premiums. And there was also, just to clarify, premiums, co-pays, these folks are paying co-pays, correct?
Generally speaking, it depends on the plan. I think what I, I appreciate Mr. Sidiya's comments. What I was saying, if you recall the last round, our employees said that they were paying in response to the question about whether they should contribute directly to health care. They were paying it in different ways, and it was ultimately keeping our costs down. So if you recall, I remember the coalition in particular speaking very passionately about that.
About the concerns about the co-pays.
About overall cost, whether it's directly to the... Whether the cost is directly paying down premium, or whether the cost is on the other side somehow keeping the benefits lower, they were, our employees have said they have been our partners in trying to control health care costs, which, as Mr. Sidiya has pointed out, has goods and bad points.
But with regard to this contract, the issue is about premiums.
Yes, sir.
It's about whether or not they're going to contribute to the premium. The value that we have put in as a council and as a mayor is that we want all of our employees to be contributing to premiums, as is done across the country. Now, that, even though there's no reopeners, that is still something that can be negotiated, is that correct?
Sir, I believe we have had amendments to our IBW contracts this year. It's very common that we have amendments along the way of specific types, so it's always possible to sort of negotiate any point again, but if we were to negotiate a health care contribution...
There'd be a give-and-take.
I believe our labor partners would want something for that.
Understood, but that can still be a give-and-take. I wanted to also hone in on the 50, you said something which is pretty shocking, 50% half-a-million dollars per lineman. We're losing linemen, 50% of the folks that we train, and we're spending a half-a-million dollars each on this training, we're losing to Edison and to these other folks. How does that cost compare to the cost of the increase? I'm trying to compare cost and benefits here, because we're, there is clearly a cost to having a salary that is going to allow people to be picked off by other divisions, and it's, you're saying that just the investment alone, it's more than a Harvard education, is $500,000 per employee, and when we lose that employee, that's a, that's a cost to us. And in order to really understand the cost-benefit analysis that's going into this contract, I want to understand how those costs compare to the costs that we're paying by increasing the salaries in order to retain.
I had said we have almost 140 apprentices graduating in the next four years. So if half of them leave, that's $35 million that we will have invested in them that will then be utilized to support other utilities. Those are direct costs and not the additional training costs or supervisory costs or anything on top of that. That's the direct salary costs, so it's the lowest, I mean, we've been very conservative with using the half-a-million-dollar number.
And then we also have to spend... And then we also have to spend another half a million dollars to...
To replace them. And then, again, we are, we have about 480 linemen right now, and we should have 720 to meet the number of outages that occur, the response time that we need, the investment we need in infrastructure. So the issue on top of it is not just the investment, but not being able to move forward and get the growth that we need.
Just even trying to get a sense of the cost. So how much does the increase, how much does every percent in, you know, of salary increase cost us? And obviously, some of this is based, there's the CPI, which I don't view as an increase, and depending on what that is this year, previous years it's been very low, and made the right choice. CBO says it'll probably be, we were telling me, 2.3% to 2.5% in the next couple of years.
That's correct. The Congressional Budget Office.
So, but it does help to understand the cost benefit here. How much is this, how much is each percentage rate increase going to cost us as ratepayers?
So if I could just change it just slightly, if you look at the annualized cost of the retention bonus for those critical classes, those lineman classes, for example, as compared to the amount that we're spending on training those classes, if we were to lose 50%, like we've seen in the past, the cost of training them and losing them as opposed to the retention, the retention's actually less costly for us. It will cost us less each year to pay a small amount to retain them than it would the cost of training them and have them depart and go to our utility.
That's what I'm trying to get at, but I'm trying to quantify that a little bit more. So I understand that conceptually.
Correct.
And that is an important story to be putting forward. But when you say retention costs, are you referring just to the double overtime? Are you referring to the increase in, to 4%? How are you quantifying that retention cost?
So as I look at the amounts for the various changes that we're seeing, the elements of the MOU, one of those is the additional COLA, the enhancement in the base salaries that's for the lineman class and the lineman supervisors. If I were to look at just that cost alone as compared to the annualized value of losing 50%, let's say, of the linemen that are coming out of the training classes, the loss is almost double the cost for us of retaining those linemen.
What are the numbers?
So an example would be the $3 million a year, let's say, would be a potential cost for the retention amount, as compared to five to five and a half million dollars a year loss when we've trained them and they've departed.
You're talking about on an individual?
Joe, I mean... I'm talking about the total with an annual cost. If the annual cost for us for the base pay increase for lineman, lineman supervisors is roughly $3 million. If you look at the training costs, we're roughly $500,000 or so per employee being trained. Over the five years of this contract, the loss amount as compared to the annual cost, it's double. The loss is roughly $25 million or more, and the cost to you is going to be about $12, $13 million on that retention for those specific classes.
Well, I see my time is over, and I'll push my button again, but I think that's the most important story that needs to be told in this contract negotiation, is what you're telling me there about the, basically the cost versus the benefit. To me, that's what justifies a contract like this, and I'd like to see that written out a little bit more, and I think the public needs to see that written out in terms of the numbers. I kind of understood what you, where you were going with those numbers, but I want to see it out, and I really think that's, that is the message the public needs to hear.
Thank you, and press your button again, Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Corretts, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is actually a pretty reasonable compromise contract. I think after three years of zeros, which is absolutely unheard of and unprecedented, to give cost of living increases around 2% is not particularly shocking, and is a fair thing to do. I think increases that keep us competitive in one particular category, I think are critical and cost-effective and make sense. And we got virtually all of the give-backs that we wanted in other areas. There's one that we didn't, which is healthcare, but I don't think you can expect to get every single thing you want in any particular contract. Now, when we do the next round, I think we've gotten virtually anything else that we wanted. The next time we negotiate this contract, if it comes back without some portion of give in healthcare, I'd be surprised, and I'd expect you to get a lot of pushback from this council. But I think this contract itself is perfectly fair. There's no effort to hide the ball based on the sequence of events. The DWP commission passed it at a time where there wasn't enough time left for us to hear it before July 1st. The desirability of doing it before July 1st has been articulated, and so we waived it. Not because we were trying to hide anything from the public, or that this is a bad contract, just in the course of events. If, if for some reason the council felt compelled to extend the process, we'd obviously be perfectly happy to have a hearing, but I think at the end of the day, we'd see what some of us have been talking about, which is, this is a perfectly reasonable contract, and nothing shocking, no big gives, no massive cost of living that are larger than the cost of living. If anything, it shields us against the unlikely possibility that if inflation goes awry, that we would lose large amounts of money by just tying it to the CPI. We actually, under that circumstance, are fiscally prudent and keep it at 4%. So I don't see any negatives to this contract. We could have gotten absolutely everything we wanted. I think we'd be giving larger increases in return, because that would be what, again, would help us seek a fair middle ground. I think we can, we can look at that as time goes forward and possibly the next contract, but for this one, I think we did perfectly well, and it's one that we can stand by, and one that we have participated in as members of the EERC.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just thank staff for the extraordinary job of pulling this agreement together. I certainly am prepared to accept the recommendation from the ratepayer advocate and the Office of Public Accountability. I think that you've had a chance to really provide some real focus on issues and concerns. I do have a couple of questions, though, around the issue on competition for specific employee categories. I know it was one of the positive points in the agreement that we were able to achieve that. You mentioned linemen, but what other positions are we identifying as critical or at risk?
So it's primarily the linemen and those that surround the basically electrified lines, either overhead or underground, those that respond in time of emergency, those that are helping connect new customers. So there's kind of a, lineman is the predominant group, but there's some peripheral classifications with a smaller number of employees in there, but it truly is...
In my understanding, as you say, there's about 700 linemen...
We've got about 400.
Authorization for 700, we have about 400, is that correct?
About 480, and we have an authorization for 720, so we're about 140 under where we should be.
Right, and we're always looking. The concerns I've heard is that there just isn't enough diversity in the number of linemen that are being deployed or that are being employed. Do we have any say-so in kind of how the numbers work, or who's, who are the, what the background is of the individuals that are in that position?
Literally, the first test is, can you climb a pole and sit at the top of a 50-foot high pole and not faint?
No, I understand that, but frequently individuals who could do that don't know about the opportunity, that's what I'm saying.
We are trying to promote it across the city everywhere we can, encourage high school students, community college students, really encourage them. There's a couple-day class, which is a pole-climbing class, which is the, we're just encouraging anybody that would even have the inkling, hey, go to this, see if you can get through this pole-climbing effort, and...
Well, these are very well-paying jobs, they're great opportunities, career opportunities.
They're fantastic.
And again, the feedback I get frequently is that people just aren't aware of these opportunities, they don't want to take advantage of them, they don't know where the recruiting takes place, they don't know how to apply, you know, the feeling is you got to know somebody, you got to be in the in-group, you have to have a friend or a contact. And so I'm just curious about how, if we have such a shortfall, you know, why aren't we being more aggressive, or how aggressive are we being in reaching out to individuals who may have an interest in joining the force?
It's a great point. We have the UPCT program, we are out there promoting the need for linemen across the board. We could always be more aggressive and do a better job, so I take that.
Again, I'm just curious, too, the extent, the city can put pressure on DWP or make that more of a benchmark requirement. I mean, how do we, how do we measure that? How do we figure out if we're doing a good job? Obviously, we're short, but how do we make sure we're getting a very representative class of employees?
Yeah, we might, we have equity metrics, we have benchmarks, and Ratepayer Advocate Pickle might want to...
Well, I know these equity metrics have just recently come into play, correct?
One of the DWP commissioners in particular was supporting equity metrics, measuring both aspects of procurement and hiring to make, to check on the diversity in the process. And DWP has implemented two rounds of reports on that process so far.
And what have those reports shown?
So we can pass this out. This is a new hire and promotional demographics, and it shows the demographics of all those that are hired and promoted. So we'll share that with you.
I'd like to see it, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Just a question on the retention issue. What percentage of the workforce that we're concerned about are we losing each year?
So we're losing half of all of the new recruits. And then, if you've, if you're here, basically you're here, you're under the old pension system, you stay until you can leave, but the, when you can leave, you're being recruited by other utilities as well. We're just getting to that bubble where most of those staff are starting to hit that 30-year mark, and so we are concerned about them leaving as well. There haven't been a lot at the retiree and leave, but again, it's, we're getting nobody in that we can replace those that are retiring and leaving.
And just as Mr. Pickle analyzes how our salaries compare and how our rates compare, have you also been able to analyze how our retention rates compare with other utilities or with other city departments?
I haven't analyzed retention yet. I've looked at salaries. I'm worried because of the economy, we may be on a turning point on one component. The tier-two pension is essentially of no value, so if you have new recruits coming in, one, they don't vest until they've been here 10 years. There are proposed changes that might reduce that to five years, but the contributions are so large on the second tier that there's no reason to stick around if you get a better offer. So with the economy in a very hot state right now, I worry that people we brought in throughout the organization, replacing the baby boomers who are able to retire out, we may see a growth in retention problems throughout the organization.
And Mr. Pickle, you talked about our salaries being about median for the department?
For the industry.
For the industry.
In both public, we were surprised to see that public utilities and investor-owned utilities were nearly identical in their compensation.
But what concerns me when we say that is, again, it's an omnibus or an overarching statement that applies to everybody. I mean, what I've at least understood from previous contract negotiations with other bargaining units is that, not the linemen, but the clerical workers, for instance, are paid more at DWP than in the city, which is why we've always had pressure from the coalition to raise rates here. Do we have any breakdown of how the different classifications compare?
The negotiating team had access to that information.
Okay. You earlier said in response to Mr. Buscaglia's question about rates, I think what you were trying to say is that you don't anticipate rates would go up. I heard you say a little, but which did you mean?
What I said was, the rates were included, or the anticipated labor increases were in the range of things that were considered. Rates were, at the rate case, when the rate case was done, were expected on the power side to go up 3.86%. Because of the overspending that number and including an updated labor number, the rates are expected to go up 3.3%. So it's about a half, over a half a percent lower than the number we expected when the rate increase was put through a year ago.
Okay. My time's almost up, I have more to ask, but there's not going to be time. Let me just say this in closing. I really support raises particularly for the linemen, and I want to be able to get to a yes on this. I do not want to be someone who bashes the DWP employees or undermines the vital work that they're trying to do. I suffer from a lot of outages in my district, as Mr. Wright knows. But I still, I'm disturbed, as are a few others, by this process, and there's still information, I feel, I don't have. I trust my colleagues in the EERC completely, but I owe my constituents the due diligence of figuring out what some of that information was, the chart that Mr. Pickle just referenced, some of the specifics that Mr. Blumenfield just asked about. I'm gathering that we put more of a premium on getting rid of the trusts than the healthcare contribution, but I'm just, I'm just not quite there yet. I would like to be, but there's just too much unanswered for me, because this is happening so fast.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are more questions than we have time to be answered in open session, and then I have questions that I'm certain would only need to be, or could be answered in closed session. So I've narrowed it down to two, just two, and it's for you, Mr. Pickle. And just listening to this conversation as well, what Mr. Bonner just mentioned in terms of the respect and gratitude, especially to the linemen and the men and women of the DWP who keep the city up and running with electricity and water, cannot be overstated enough, the deep respect and appreciation I have for that work. But I feel that enough emphasis wasn't given to that special piece of it, and that, as Mr. Bonner mentioned, it's the 10 units within that were in an omnibus fashion covered with this, when what we really should have been focused on is the retention piece of the three bargaining units. And I feel that we perhaps missed a golden opportunity there to focus, you know, more in on that with this product. Now, Mr. Rube mentioned something, asked a question, and Mr. Pickle, I think you sort of got there, and that is, in terms of the likelihood or possibility that we'll have to ask ratepayers for additional money to cover the increase in salary, there is a lot of variables there. It's a two-part question, it's really one with two parts. So I would like to know from you if that is a possibility, that we'll have to go back to ratepayers and ask for rate increases in a worst-case scenario to pay for these increases in a worst-case scenario?
For perspective, the estimated increase by DWP, DWP's estimate is $56 million per year. In '15, '16, they were underspent by $600 million. So the underspending far compensates for what will be charged to the rate increase. So I see little chance of this increase going beyond plan.
I get that, you see, that's incredibly unlikely, and I appreciate that, unless there's some sort of catastrophe, okay? So I appreciate that, because that's where the, that's a key. Now, there was an analysis done of the overall contract, but was there an analysis done of the work rules? And the work rules is where the most variables exist in terms of the fluctuation of pay rates.
Work rules is a broad concept, and the way labor rules are really determined are a little bit like the clerical... a little bit like the clerical term scripture and tradition. A lot of it is tradition and so quantifying that, instead, what we've been working on since the last rate case is a step up to a new benchmarking effort that does cost comparisons across utilities. And the total compensation work was the basis for that, looking at wage rates and you, being able to use that for the total cost analysis. That effort is contracted for and we're having startup meetings on that this week.
That concerns me a little bit for obvious reasons, but I understand the, you know, the sense of urgency you have about this. So I just have a comment in that as...
Just one, Mr. Pickle, I don't, I, that work was in his work plan, not for this contract, for his general work plan.
Okay.
So he did the, sort of the first compensation study, which came out this year. He's come doing some, I don't want to speak for him, doing some more compensation work and then going to this sort of broader benchmarking work, which will be, I think, his work for an extended period.
And DWP did basic benchmarking on this back in, reported in 2015.
Okay, I would be much more comfortable with a thorough analysis of the work rules going into something like this as well, with this particular contract.
It isn't just work rules, there are many components of that. We're really focusing on, in a rapidly changing utility industry, making sure DWP stays efficient in spite of the changes.
Okay.
If, if I could, sir, with regards to the, the phase one benchmarking, we were looking at the other peer utilities and what we found that I think is very demonstrative is the fact that our ONM was really benchmarking the median. So when you compare against other utilities, our ONM costs and the ONM investment was really coming in right where it really should be. You don't really want to be too high or too low when you're looking at that kind of benchmarking analysis. And I think as Dr. Pickle has adequately stated, as we, that was our phase one benchmarking. With phase two, we really looked at the total compensation and then with phase three, we're looking to drill down to those areas from the phase one study and phase two where we think need further review and further study. But I think it's, it's key that this is an ongoing effort and then it really complements what we already have in place with our, our metrics. So we have a very robust rates metrics that were approved as part of the rate action by the city council, the mayor, and we also have the equity metrics and other metrics that we're using to really evaluate performance financially and operationally. So I think combined, I think it, it gives a, a much better view as to how we're progressing, how we compare, and it's going to be an iterative, ongoing effort.
Thank you. I would just close with this, Mr. President, and that is, I think that, I certainly look at this decision through a particular lens. In terms of, you know, supporting the middle class and supporting our men and women in the Department of Public Works, it's not lost on the citizenry of Los Angeles that the average salary is over six figures of a DWP employee. And that taken into context of the average household income in Los Angeles hovers around $64,000 a year. The average household income in the 13th district hovers around $45,000 a year. So we can't not look at these kinds of decisions with that type of perspective. I'm not suggesting that that should be the, the final guide in our decision-making, but it certainly needs to be a component of the decisions we make on behalf of the ratepayers, especially when it is very possible we'll have to go back and raise rates again so that we can support improvements of our infrastructure. And that, that's a concern I have and that, that ends my questioning and I appreciate all the work that's been done. Please don't think that I, I don't. I know this has been an intense, incredible, several-week-long process, but I, I think perhaps there's just not enough time for us to, some of us to get comfortable with this at, on this day. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add briefly to speak to Mr. Price's concerns that I think we have been missing something so far, which is I don't think the department has been aggressively participating yet in the targeted local hire program. And I know the folks that have been hired thus far have been found to be more enthusiastic and I think are less likely just to jump to the next job, but rather be grateful for this one. So I think if we would look at more apprenticeships through this program, I think you will find that you have fewer people jumping ship and a greater enthusiasm for the job. So I would greatly encourage you to fill some of those very significant shortfalls by participating more actively in the program.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. There are no additional speakers on the queue. I want to thank all of you for coming. I know we, it's been a good question and answer, period. With that said, let's, members, prepare to vote on this item. If you'd please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, what is before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, if all members would rise. Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tea committee was scheduled to start 20 minutes ago. We will start at 1:45, 2. We will start at 2, deferring to my members.
Okay, adjourning motions. I'm looking to my left, Mr. Harris-Dawson's side, don't see any to my left. I'm now looking to my right. I don't see any members. This meeting is adjourned.